Welcome to the Tuesday, December 15th, 2020 regular meeting of the Walla Creek City Council. This meeting is being held accordance with the Brown Act is currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 17th, 2020, that allows attendance by members of the City Council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walla Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled Public Communications, which is for public comments items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. When I open the public comment period, use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, which will alert staff that you have a public comment you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. Please wait your turn and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID is 922-3748-5892, and the pass code is 134409. If you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways. You can view it via YouTube Live, visit the city website's YouTube channel, or the cable broadcast Comcast Channel 28 in the Incorporated area of Walla Creek, Rossmore Channel 26, Wave Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. And you can livestream online at the city's website. Now, at this time, would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Susie, would you please read the roll call?
Councilmember Darling?
Here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Here.
And Mayor Welk?
Here. Thank you. Now, before we get to the consent calendar and before continuing on the agenda, there is an urgent item that's come that's happened within Walla Creek, and we wanted to turn this over to the city attorney quickly to get his direction on this.
Thank you, Mayor Welk. As the council is aware, there was a spill involving the Kinder Morgan pipelines. The council has received, and the city's received significant public inquiry about that. It is possible for the council to receive a current update on that item this evening, but to do that, you would need to add an item to your agenda this evening. That requires a two-thirds vote of the city council. And as the council is aware, you can add an item to the agenda by that two-thirds vote if the item has come to the attention of the city after the publication of the agenda, and if there is an urgent need for information to be shared. And so, in this instance, if the council wishes to add this item, you would entertain a motion to add an informational update on the Kinder Morgan pipeline issue to the city council agenda.
Thank you. And could that be prior to the consent calendar?
Mayor can be anywhere that, yes, it can be anywhere the council desires to put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Just a question, please. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to do this. This is informational only, so there would be no action for the council to take.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. I, I'll make the motion to add this to the, our agenda tonight prior to the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The city clerk, could you please read the roll call?
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Aye.
And Mayor Welk?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, so why don't we move forward on that and who will be providing the update?
So I will start things. Dan Buckshai, city manager, and also your emergency services manager, which is a role that I've been using far too much this year, unfortunately. So, as a brief recap, and then I will introduce some folks from Kinder Morgan in just a moment. I believe it was the day before Thanksgiving, we were notified that there was a leak in the high-pressure conveyance line, pipeline that conveys jet fuel to San Jose Airport and possibly elsewhere that was on the Broadway Extension area. That was, the pipeline was emptied. The crap, which we believe occurred as a result of a tree root in the area, possibly one of the large oak trees that is nearby, that was repaired fairly quickly. However, it was discovered, obviously, that there was some leakage of fuel and what we came to learn as of a few days ago, the fuel was surfacing in and around the channel that is right by Civic Park and Ignacio in that area back by the bridge that effectively it's been running underneath the channel, the jet fuel, and then surfacing up through some cracks in the bottom of the channel. I actually went and walked it today and viewed it firsthand. And I'm going to defer to the others who have much more expertise in this area of mine to provide an update. But I do want to acknowledge our public work staff, particularly Steve Waymire and others who have been on-site repeatedly, including over the Thanksgiving holiday and now. And obviously, adding to this, this agenda on short order, this is something that is rarely done, so this is very important. This is obviously a major safety issue. And we have invited folks from Kinder Morgan here to speak this evening to give you all an update and give the community an update. So at that, I would like to introduce Alan Four of Kinder Morgan, and he may have some other individuals with him as part of his team to provide an update. Alan, if you can introduce yourself, please.
This is Alan Four. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay.
Are we able to see them while they talk to us?
Are you able to turn on your cameras as you're speaking?
Mike, this is Alan Four. Mike, Ken, are you able to turn on your cameras? I can't seem to turn on mine.
This is Mike. I'm, I am unfortunately without a camera on the system here.
Okay. I think I got a link here that I can get. There we go. Okay. All right. So Mike Peta, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city manager and staff. My name's Alan Four, Vice President of Public Affairs for Kinder Morgan. Also with me this evening are Mike Peta. And Mike is our Vice President of our Environmental Health and Safety Remediation, specifically involved with this incident. And also Ken Collins from our Public Affairs Group, who has been working on a day-to-day basis with city staff and a number of other regulatory authorities that are involved with this incident. So, I appreciate the city manager's summary of the incident. I'll add a little bit to that and then give you an update on current status as well. But I do want to say from the outset that we certainly regret this incident. I think, as you know, Kinder Morgan does have pipelines in the area that transport primarily gasoline that's delivered to ultimately gas stations to deliver to the public. So it's an important transportation system, and we do everything in our, our ability to keep that system safe. And we certainly regret this incident, the inconvenience it's caused to the city, to the residents. And we are committed to, to remediate this incident, to investigate the root cause on exactly what happened, to make sure it doesn't happen again. And we are working closely with a number of agencies to, to do that. And this is a, there is a lot of oversight of our industry and our company, and particularly when there's an incident as well. And I do also, second what the city manager mentioned about city staff, I was out on the bridge today with the Public Works Director and the City Engineer. I know a number of our staff are on, in day-to-day contact with the host of representatives of the city, Public Works, and other departments, as well as Contra Costa County, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Office of Spill Prevention and Response, State Fire Marshal, a number of agencies, EPA, US EPA are involved in the oversight as we work towards remediation and cleanup. So just to restate a bit of the timeline on, on this incident, as the city manager mentioned, around November 20th, we responded to a release in the area of South Broadway. And at that time, we believed the release was limited to that area. We did some excavation. We shut down the line, first of all, and then we did some excavation in that area. And from that initial investigation, believe that the, any product that had left the line, which we thought at that time was around eight barrels, had remained in that area and had not gone any further. And that was partially based on the excavation, was entirely based on the excavation we did at that time. Subsequent to that, we were notified of a gasoline smell in the area of, that was previously mentioned near the Iron Horse Trail footbridge just south of Ignacio Valley Road. And that led to an investigation in that particular area, shutdown of the system as well. And we made a determination that the leak did not come, there was no leak in that particular area, but the leak had come from, migrated from the previous location. So since that time, we have been on a 24, really a 24/7 activity to, number one, begin the cleanup process and also to determine the extent of specifically what happened and the, how much product was released, where is that product? And, and removing that product in the, in the safest and, and in a process that's approved by various regulatory agencies that are involved. We, is our estimate at this time that it's between 700 and 1,000 barrels, which translates to about 31,000 to 42,000 gallons. And the precise location of that, we are now working in the area of that was previously mentioned, south of Ignacio Valley Road. And, and just if you're walking along the trail or using the trail, you can see our activities in that area. And we're focused in that area right now. That area is, is obviously of concern because of, it's the water that comes through there. So all of the various agencies that have oversight over that are working with us to, as we both remove the product as well as keep that area consistent with the regulations for water flow. So what, what are residents seeing and what are they going to be seeing? They'll see more of what they're seeing now. And it will be ongoing until we are complete. Now, the, the types of activities will change over, over time. We're going to be doing some additional testing. We'll be doing some monitoring wells. We'll be doing some drilling to, to make determinations of the full extent of how far the product migrated. And there will be activity into the evening in some, in some cases, but primarily limited to during the day. And again, we'll be working with all of the appropriate permitting agencies on this. We certainly are concerned about noise issues related to local residents or lights on in the evening, those types of things. And we've been working with landowners that are adjacent to this particular location, as well as the landowner that was in the area of the original release. And we will continue to do that. And the extent of that really is, is, is what can we do to accommodate whatever issues they are experiencing? It's primarily been noise issues related to the cleanup equipment, the vacuum trucks, generators, et cetera. There is no public safety issue here. I think that's been reaffirmed by the various agencies. And we do have 24/7 air monitoring. Now, if you are out on-site, as I know the city manager was today and other staff, depending on where you are, you may smell some product, and by that I mean gasoline. But that's because it's, it's limited to inside of the, the canal area. And if you're standing right above it, you may get some, some smell of that. But in recognition of that, we do have the air monitoring 24/7. And I know the county was just out there with their own air monitoring yesterday and did not determine any levels of, of air that was problematic, not only for residents but for people that are, want, using the trailer or in the area. So we will continue that around the clock with, not only in that location, but in other locations in that general area as well, both right next to the canal into the residential area on the trail, et cetera, so we have full knowledge of air quality. As I mentioned, this is going to be a process and we, we, but our commitment is a full cleanup. And that can take time, but the levels of that, the immediate extraction of product from a particular area, that involves a lot of activity and the, the equipment on-site that can be noisy and the lights and, and sometimes working into the evening and weekends. And so that will not, certainly not go on forever, of course. But we do need to focus on that particular activity now so we can extract product. So what we've been doing is, and I know, how do we communicate to the public? Obviously, we'll appear at council meetings when, when you'd like us to. But we further, I know the city is posting on its social media updates that we are providing. OSPR, Office of Spill Prevention and Response, has updates on their spill watch site. There's specific location for Iron Horse. And we, we want not only the council to know, but the public to know specifically what is happening on a day-to-day basis. We do have a daily call that representatives of our company participate in. And I know city staff is on that call, county staff, a number of regulatory agencies are on that call for Q and A updates. What are you doing today? We send every morning, we send over a construction plan for the day. How many people? What will they be doing? What will it look like? So that if you, if your staff gets questions or the council gets questions, you'll know exactly what is happening on a day-to-day basis. I'll just close by saying, and then we're happy to, to respond to questions, that our, our primary concern is and will continue to be public safety in this process, as well as protection of the environment. And we are working closely with all of the agencies that are involved in this oversight. So it is Kinder Morgan's operation, but I want to assure you that it is extensively reviewed. Everything we do is extensively reviewed by the agencies that have oversight, and, and we're working in partnership with them. Again, we regret the incident, this incident and the inconvenience it's caused to the city, county residents, and are committed to, to moving forward to a full remediation of this with the least impact possible to the day-to-day activities of residents, as well as a, a full protection of any environmental-related issues as a result of the incident. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer your questions, or Mike Pete on our team as well.
Thank you, Alan. I see the city manager, Dan Buckshai, has a question.
Yeah, I wanted to, actually not a question, just a couple of comments here. So we're trying to get our, our city engineer, Steve Waymire, on here. He's having some technical difficulties with Zoom, apparently, but we'll pull up a map here before too long to help provide some context. And we also have some pictures that we may be able to provide here in just a moment. But I do want to share the regulatory nature of this, that it is a bit complicated. So portions of this, where this occurred are, are right near the city boundary. So obviously, we are involved and a lot of our residents are potentially impacted. However, it's also in the county flood control channel. So the flood control district has jurisdiction, as does the county as a result of that. But the lead agency is the United States EPA. And then locally, as Alan noted, the office, the California Office of Spill Prevention and Response is also involved. So there is no shortage of regulatory involvement at this point. Bigger challenge, frankly, is making sure that all of the different entities are coordinating and receiving and distributing the additional information. And, you know, I will just add, having toured the site today for the first time and really helped piece this all together, and, you know, as Alan noted, there is a considerable smell, particularly right by the area by the Ignacio Bridge, as was noted, it's very strong. And I believe that Kinder Morgan has relocated a few of the residents that were nearby in that location. There are maybe four or five homes in which the individuals were relocated, which is hopefully temporary until the, certainly the smell subsides and hopefully most of the fuel is pumped out of that site and eventually remediated. So I just wanted to add that, and then I don't know if council, if you'd like to go to questions, or Heather, if we're able to get up a map at this point in time, or if we need a few moments to do that. I see you just, our Public Works Director, Heather Bounder, just joined us on the screen.
Thanks, Heather. While we, while we start to get Steve on and hopefully get a, a map, do we have any council member questions in the meantime? Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Four, for being on tonight and, and providing that update. You talked about the air quality monitoring. Is there any other environmental issues in terms of water quality, public safety that we should be aware of?
Mike Peta, do you want to respond to that?
Certainly. Thank you for the question. My name is Mike Peta with Kinder Morgan. I'm in the Environmental Health and Safety Group. So as, as you're aware, we've had some rain over the last several weeks, that's, or several days. That has been a, a big focus of our efforts to make sure that we mitigate any potential for, for this product that's weeping through the cracks to get into the, to the stormwater. And so that, that has occupied, you can see, if you've, if you've been in the area, several structures that we have built to divert water around the area where we've seen these amounts of product, the product showing up. As it relates to any public safety issues associated with water or groundwater, you know, we, we have done a, a search for any water wells in the area. We have not found any in our searches through both public and private databases. So the, the primary issue is to make sure that we maintain our booming and diversion structure so that we can keep it out of any of the stormwater that's moving through that channel.
Thank you. And then has the pipeline breach itself been repaired?
Yes, sir. It was repaired shortly, right, right before Thanksgiving. We excavated it. It, it actually was a, it was a bend in the pipe that wrapped around the tree by design. And then the tree roots essentially had wrapped around the pipe. And so that segment of pipe has been replaced.
And lastly, when do you expect to have full cleanup and remediation completed?
So at, at this point, that's, that's a difficult question to answer. I, I can assure you that we're working as quickly as possible to get this, this product out of the ground. We are, the steps in order for us to do that include making sure we know the full extent of it, which we're in the process of doing. And once we have that extent identified, we'll be able to, to better answer that question for you because we can determine exactly how long it will take to get it recovered.
Any ballpark estimates now?
I, I, I would, I would hate to hazard a guess at this point, just, just because there's a bit of uncertainty here still.
Fair enough. Thank you.
But I would add, Mayor Pro Tem, that it will, it will look different over time. I, I know right now, if you are walking along the trail and look at our activity, it's pretty extensive in that area. So that's not going to, there will be a shelf life on that part. And, and that's an important distinction because we could have a variety of activities.
a variety of activities going on for quite some time, but the, the activities that may be more impactful, I think, have a shorter shelf life. But I would agree with Mike that I don't, we don't want to put any dates out there yet. Because that will set an expectation. Our, our primary concern is here is to get the cleanup done in a way that's going to have maximum effect. So that's really at the stage we're at now.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. For and Mr. Peta, for your frankness with what has been happening. So the difference between a presumption of, we initially thought eight barrels and 700 to 1,000 barrels, sounds like this had been going slowly leaking over a significant amount of time. And then suddenly it was a noticeable leaking on your pressure gauges. Is that a fair statement?
Did we lose Mike? There he is. Mike, you want to respond to that?
Yes, I, I will, I'll speak to that. I, I, I do not believe that's, that's the nature of the release here. And I'll, I'll give you some, some detail on why we think that's the case. First of all, the, as we opened up the excavation where the pipe, where we had the pipe release, there was very little contamination observed in that hole. And so that, that factored into our assumption that it was a fairly small quantity released. With that said, there was other lines of evidence that, that led us to that conclusion, which include the fact that the, the product that we had sampled and located was, was a single type product, just gasoline. This pipe transports gasoline, diesel and jet fuel. So when we match the analytical data to the, to what we know to have been passing through the pipeline over time, it, it tells us that it was relatively isolated event that led to the release because we are only detecting gasoline for the most part in our analytical data. I guess the last point is that what's, what's very unique about this situation and i- is the fact that the pipeline release essentially was, was very near this gravel conduit, which, which has allowed it to migrate so quickly, this distance of over a mile. And so that factor is why we did not see such the, the product in the excavation as we would if we had 1,000 barrel release. It's just that the, that product found a way to move away from the release site so quickly. So combination of the observations of the product type matched with what we know passed through the line. And then the knowledge of the distribution mechanism for that product to migrate lead us to believe that it was a fairly isolated incident, not a chronic release.
So how long do you think this release had been going on?
A, a period of hours, not, not days.
With that much release happening in a period of hours. Okay. The, I'm thinking about, I was curious as to where this location was actually in the flood control channel. Are we confident that the seepage that's occurring in the channel is basically all of it? It's migrated through the, the gravel path, so to speak, and then it's, it's popped out at the first opportunity?
That, that's the model, that, that's the assumption that we're making now. Now that said, I mean, and that's supported by measurements that we have taken to this point, including what, what happened to be some vent pipes that are within that gravel layer that, that, that show up into the, in the storm drains. We're able to track and trace the product based on vapors measured in those vent pipes. That said, you know, we have a, a plan to install, you know, over 40 wells throughout the area and soil sample locations, just to verify that we are, have complete understanding of the distribution of the product.
Thank you. Remediation, fixing the problem is very important. How do we find other areas along this pipeline where this same thing could occur and prevent it?
So, so there are, there are several plans and I'm, I'm a little outside of my lane here in talking about this, but we can certainly come back and, and speak with, and have our operations manager speak to you. But that said, I can tell you what I know, which is, again, the circumstance which led to this release was where the pipe had been installed essentially around the root base of a tree. And so we are going to, and then over time, those roots essentially wrapped around the pipe and created a situation where there was a strain and tension that, that created the release location. So we are, we are in the process of identifying all similar locations between Concord and San Jose. And we will, we will make sure that we do a physical inspection of the pipe at each of those locations in addition to some additional work that we'll do by putting high sensitivity tools inside the pipe that, that can measure for this type of similar situation. And those tools will be run here within the next month as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I, can I add on to that real quick? Can you hear me? We, we asked that same question and we have heard from a different division of Kinder Morgan. It's their pipe integrity division, and I might not have their title exactly right. And they're planning on being out here as soon as Friday and doing some testing on the pipe, particularly in the South Broadway Extension area, where we do have several oak trees in that area. I have not had a chance to connect with him directly, but we'll be doing that tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. And is there anything more that staff wishes to have the council see?
Yeah, I believe Steve Waymire is on if, if we want to pull up the map. That said, Councilmember Darling, did you have a question? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
I just had a quick, I just had a really quick question. Thank you guys for all the, the report. Many of us in South Walnut Creek remember the explosion in the area years ago. In this situation with this kind of leak, was there a risk of a similar explosion? Or is, was that different because of the cause of the breakage than being the other utility?
Yeah, it, it, different, different circumstances. The, the 2004 incident was a line strike. So that was not an issue in this instance.
All right, Steve, I see you're on. Is, is Steve going to be connecting to or showing a map?
That's the plan. He is showing up on Zoom here, but I don't see him, so.
Yeah.
Give it issues. Heather, do you have the map that you can pull it up if not?
I don't have the map, so I know.
I don't have a map right on my. Yeah, I'm sorry. I have, I'm having problems here.
Okay.
I can't share a map. I apologize.
Okay. Can you, can you give any more of a audio description of what you were going to be showing us?
Yeah, sure. I guess, you know, the, the question has been like exactly where things are. So the, the leak that we're seeing is down, if you're familiar with the Iron Horse Trail, where the, the bridges or like an iron bridge there. So that's where the leak is coming up. And so, but the, the break actually occurred. Someone's trying to share a map here. So there you go.
Okay.
So if you see the, there's a curve in the bridge right there. So that's where the leaks occurred. That's where we're actually working, which is kind of at the intersection of Walnut Creek and the channel.
Okay.
And the Iron Horse Trail comes right through there. So there's always, there's just tons of people going through all the time. And you can see the, the single family homes off to the side there, too.
And just to be clear, if I could, that's not where the leak occurred. That is where the product has migrated to.
That's correct. Right.
So is the migration point south of the merge of the creek, the natural creek and the channel? Or is it north of it closer to YVR?
It's south. It's just south of, of where the confluences of the two creeks.
Just barely south. I mean, it's basically right there.
So I know we don't have a regularly scheduled city council meeting for another month, but Heather, I appreciate the updates you've been giving over, over email. And I believe that we've been updating the city website as well. But can we make sure that we get an update on this for the next city council meeting?
Sure.
Yes, Luella.
It, it's a kind of stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. Is there any chance of an explosion or any kind of fire danger where the gas is coming, has migrated to? And are we being, is there things we can do to make sure that such a bad thing wouldn't happen?
Well, I'll, I'll start, Mike, and you may want to add to that. So the, the, any of the vapors that would be problematic are in the canal itself. And any workers that are in that particular area are in full protective gear. And so residents and local access is, is limited because it's down in the drainage canal itself. But from a public safety standpoint, from the trail, from residence areas, there's no, no issue related to that. Mike, do you want to add anything?
No, I, I think that's accurate. I, I will just add that, that is accurate. I'm sorry. I don't think that is accurate. You know, the community air monitoring is, is also providing us some support to verify that there isn't any type of, of vapors in, in a, in an ambient area that would create a hazard. And then the last thing I'll add is that, you know, one of the pieces of equipment that we're working to deploy is actually intended to remove vapors from this area, this gravel pack area, and it'll remove and combust them. So that's, that's an extra step that we're taking. But we certainly have, you know, our intent was to make sure that every utility system in the area was aware of what, what's going on so that if there's anything that we don't know about, they, they can bring it to our attention as well.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's staff has anything more to add to that. Thank you for the update and the background on this. And I'm sure we'll be talking with you at a future date.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and if I could just close by reiterating, we do want to be transparent in this process and welcome the opportunity to keep the council updated as well as residents. And if anyone has issues or concerns, please, please let us know. We, we do want to be responsive. We have personnel seven days a week onsite and, and will be responsive ASAP.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Sure, we all appreciate.
Mayor, it does look like we have a, a member of the public that would like to ask a question or make a comment, if that's appropriate.
Are we able to have public comment onto this?
The, I mean, the council can take public comment if you desire. Alternatively, you could have the person comment during the public communication section for items that are not normally on the agenda. But if you wish to take public comment, now you can.
Okay, I, I, I feel like this is of, could be of some importance to people that live in the area. So let's take, so let's take the public comment on this one.
Okay, we have Carol Weed.
Hi, Carol. Go, go ahead.
I didn't unmute myself. Okay. So my name is Carol Weed and I do live in Walnut Creek, but not in the area involved. And so it's a comment that I make. This gasoline is for internal combustion vehicles. If there was ever a time to consider getting an electric vehicle, there is a rebate that's rather significant for a tax rebate through the end of December. So I encourage people who have been debating about whether to get a car, consider that we could avoid problems like this by having more electric vehicles on the road.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, with that, appreciate the Kinder Morgan people for having this last minute addition to our agenda. And keep in touch with us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is next on the agenda. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? Luella? Yes?
I wish to pull item L.
Okay. Councilmember Silva.
I'd like to pull item E for a question. Thank you.
Okay. And does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar?
We do have a member of the public wanting to speak to an item on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also, when the, either before the public comments or at the end of the public comment, I do have one, a comment that I need to read into the record related to an item on the consent calendar.
Okay, sure.
We have Jan Warren.
Okay, let's bring in Jan.
Well, twice in one day I finally get it right. Thanks. I'm asking to pull item H, Adoption Resolution Approving the Appointment of an Interim Chief of Police Effective the 27th of this month. I just wanted to express some concern. Uh oh, what happened to me? This, express some concern about the staffing at the police department. We had a chief of police who retired, I believe, the end of October. And now we have the appointed interim retiring and been reinstating as a new tenant or something, whatever the terminology is. I, I'm going by my memory, this is not the best, but I seem to remember we had two captains before the police chief retired in October. And one of the, I guess they were lieutenant, Tom Cashin was elevated to a captain. I was out on the website for the police department today and, you know, it obviously is hard to keep up, keep up websites, but they still had Tom Cashin as the lieutenant. And I couldn't figure out who the police captains were. And I couldn't really find out a whole lot about how many people are retiring. I know we lost a lieutenant from retirement this summer. And so I'm just wondering about the morale and people leaving before we can get people in place before March with the consultant interviews. So that's just a comment, but thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Okay. Are there any other public comments, City Clerk?
I don't see any additional, additional speakers.
Okay, we will close the public comment portion for the consent calendar. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar items that have not been pulled?
I'll move to adopt consent cal. Oh, does the city attorney need to read something into the record?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I may, one of the items that was not pulled by the council is, I believe it's item 2H and consent calendar item 2H relates to the compensation payable to the interim department director, the interim police chief. Item 2H recommends that city council approve the appointment of the interim chief of police effective December 27, 2020. The proposed hourly pay rate for the interim appointment is within the existing pay range for the chief of police classification. And there would not be any other benefits or compensation paid during the interim appointment. Details of the proposed appointment are set forth in the staff report. And we're required pursuant to some changes in the Brown Act a few years ago to make a comment regarding any compensation issue that involves executive management when it's otherwise on the consent calendar. So we just need to read that into the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I have a question before I make the motion. Since Jan Warren had a comment on item H, if we, if we want the city manager to maybe answer a question related to item H, should we do that first and then?
Right. Well, since, since you're looking to approve that item, let's ask the city manager a question on that.
So my question is, well, Ms. Warren raised the issue, kind of this transition timeframe. Can you give us an update on the recruitment of the new chief and why interim appointments might not be on the website?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So interim appointments are just that, I believe. Ms. Warren referenced Lieutenant Cashon, who is an acting captain, as is Lieutenant Tracy Reese is the other acting captain at the moment. So because they are in acting roles, I believe the website still reflects their official title of lieutenant with respect to the chief of police. With respect to the chief of police, I was actually going to provide an update on this as part of my city manager update, but I'll do it now. So we did extensive outreach. We hired a recruiter, Bob Murray and Associates, who solicited extensive input from the community about what characteristics the community would like to seek in a new police chief. The recruiter met with five different focal focus groups representing various interests in the community. We also had a survey that was posted on our website through open town hall for approximately a month. And then there was an actual physical, well, Zoom, I should say, not physical, town hall in which anybody could attend and provide input to the recruiter, our human resources department. I attended that meeting as well. So we received over 300 responses. That information has been compiled and summarized and is available on our website. Good news is what the community in many respects is seeking is also what our organization would like to seek in a police chief. So there's a lot of alignment around what folks believe would constitute a good police chief. The process going forward is that interviews will occur later this week. We do have two days scheduled for interviews, and we do have five different of folks that will be interviewing the various candidates. We do have a team made up of six, five or six members of the chief's advisory committee. We have a panel comprised of other chiefs and city managers. We have a panel of city staff, including some police staff as well as non-police staff. We have the executive team, and then myself and the assistant city manager. So the goal is to have a good look at these folks this week and hopefully be in a position to make a decision, but we'll have to wait and see. That said, with respect to any of the candidates, that information is confidential. Personnel information is obviously, this is a high-profile position, and these candidates are in other high-profile jobs. So I cannot share any more beyond that with respect to who the candidates are or not. But that is an update on the process at this point.
Thank you, I think I got my questions answered.
Thank you. Okay, now do we have?
Right, I will, I will move to adopt consent calendar items 2A through D and 2F through K.
Isn't there an amendment to one of them?
That includes the amendment to the item C, whichever one was the Oak Grove.
D.
2F.
2F. Where it was the references to the location.
Okay. City clerk, could you read the vote, please? Take the vote.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
And Mayor Wilk?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's first go to, what was it, E?
It is, and I have to warn that my question actually may be, need to be answered by Kevin Safin if he's, but he's probably not in the panel. I should have said something right up front, but maybe he. Good evening. Happy holidays.
At your service.
So in this fee report, development impact fees and expenditures, one of them is the Inlu Art Fund. And I noticed that it doubled in size in the last year, and it went from about $500,000 to over $1 million. Can you, one, tell us who those impact fees that we collected were from? Was it one big project? And number two is, what are those fees used for?
I apologize for not having the specific details on that.
Sorry, I should have let you know.
It's okay. It's okay, I can speculate, but I may be off. I'll give you some background to start before I ramble off who I think it might be. So when there is--
Before somebody sends you a message that tells you?
You're on to me. Whenever a developer, this is pursuant to the Public Art Master Plan, pursues a development project in the city, meeting certain requirements, they have an option to either put art onsite, which is equivalent to one of their construction cost, or contribute to the Public Art Fund, the Inlu Fund, of 0.75% of the cost. Most developers have been putting art onsite, going through the Arts Commission. Those that choose instead to put money into the Inlu Fund do just that, write us a check at the certificate of occupancy time. And so what we see is people doing that a little bit more lately, just given the painted process. And so I'm going to, shoot, I don't have it yet, but I'm speculating that the biggest developer that we saw recently was the Lifetime Fitness Project down at Broadway Plaza. They chose not to put art onsite, that's a very large project. So I expect probably one of the large ones that did that, but I don't have that in front of me. I can get that for you perhaps before the end of the meeting, but that's, that's likely largest contributor there. And then to your other question, what's that used for? That's used for things like the murals that have been coming up downtown, things like maintaining the peace. 25% of that does go to offset the administrative cost of running the public art program. And then things like the upcoming large leisure center Plaza Public Art Project. So many varied examples of the public art that comes in that are on the municipal side. So we tend to use that primarily for projects or maintenance and not so much for staff.
And the, I'm sorry, there is a third question. So are the uses in our municipal code in the, or are they actually been adopted by resolution?
I referred to the city attorney on this, but they are in the municipal code, they are in the Muni code. But to get into Muni code was adopted by resolution back in 2016, I believe, is when the last update occurred. And we could look at that, but the city attorney may have more specifics about Muni code versus RSO.
We, we're going to need to report back to the council on that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there, Mayor, I'm happy to move the adoption of item 2E.
Please, please do so.
I move the adoption of item 2E with the amendment on the fee report.
Second.
Okay. Suzie, can you take the roll, the vote, please?
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Francois?
Aye.
And Mayor Wilk?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And?
Now to L.
And yeah, so L, and Luella, you had pulled out?
I did. And it's, and thank you very much, Mayor. Those are very thoughtful appointments. I appreciate how much care you took in doing it. I just have one thing that I think I would suggest. I am, I am suggesting that I be the person that is removed from the former Rebound Committee and that the other person who was on it, Councilmember Silva, is put in my place. And I do that with a lot of thought because I love the job and because I really thought I was doing good work. But I think Councilmember Silva brings a depth of knowledge about what's going on in the state because of her work with California Cities, or whatever its new name is, as well as she is more mobile than I am, and she walks the downtown consistently. I don't get to get out because I'm under a pretty strict shelter-in-place rule. So I think she's more aware of the current circumstances. So I think she would, she would be a better choice than I.
And Councilmember Silva, would you concur with that?
I appreciate Councilmember Haskew's thoughts, and I'm happy to do it. But I would actually, then, I don't want to be greedy. The Development Services Review Committee, I would be delighted if she would take my spot on that because she actually was there at the beginning of that and has the established relationship with the development community on the issues that are going on there. And I would be happy effectively to swap with her.
Okay, with me.
We used to call that swap for swap something when I was a kid, and I don't remember the name of it anymore. But I appreciate the thought that went into that. The reason that I had originally chosen Luella to be on there is because, on the Rebound Committee, because I was looking for the consistency from mayor to mayor on this. But you make good points, and I think it is important to have somebody that does spend some significant time downtown. I think this ad hoc committee, I know that we normally don't change assignments in ad hoc committee, but this is one that is obviously going to go for several more months, if not a year. And it's become a focal point for the economic recovery of the business community in Walnut Creek. And so I know the mayor receives a lot of calls and comments on this. I certainly have been just over the last couple of weeks, and I know, Luella, you, you did receive a lot of calls and comments on that over the previous several months. So I appreciate that. If somebody would like to make a motion, taking those two changes into account, you can entertain that.
I move that we accept item, the consent calendar L, and with the two changes that we've made to the original presentation.
And I will second the nomination on that.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzie. All right, now comes to the public communications portion of, of the agenda. And this portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? And if so, please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, if you would like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide public comment on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand now so we can identify the total number of speakers that desire to speak at this time. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We have multiple individuals wanting to comment.
Okay, let's call the first one in. And, and by the way, I will call after, when we get down to the last few, I will call for one last call of public comments that we can then give an indication of how many more there will be.
Okay, first speaker, Chris.
Hi, Chris, you're on, please unmute yourself. Chris, you're still on mute.
How's that?
There we go. You're good.
Hi, I'm Chris, I live in Concord. I'm speaking tonight to express the views of the silent majority in Walnut Creek and surrounding communities in opposition to the vocal minority, which I've heard repeatedly at recent meetings. At the last meeting, I heard at least 12 speakers whose messages were obviously coordinated and designed to pressure the council to drastically alter the police force and the basic nature of our free and tolerant community. Despite what they said, statistics and other data show that Walnut Creek is not a racist community, and our law enforcement officers do not target minorities unfairly. When true abuse has become known, they are and should be weeded out and dealt with appropriately using the legal system and not coercion by mob rule. All of us agree with the phrase, Black Lives Matter. We do not agree with the objectives and demands of the organization referred to as Black Lives Matter or their network group Movement for Black Lives. A cursory review of their websites, in addition to the statements we have all heard the members make openly, show that their goal is to upend our society and replace it with an intolerant, authoritative regime. As they state, quote, "We seek not reform, but transformation," unquote. Further, they seek to form a, quote, "global liberation movement that will overturn imperialism and capitalism," unquote. Free speech and other guarantees in our Bill of Rights are anathema to them. Their tactics, like those of other far-left groups, are intimidation and fear-mongering. In in-person confrontations with them, they stand close, shatter obscenities, cause racist, throw objects at us, and grab our possessions, all with the goal of frightening us and shutting us down. Our city and our country are reaching a dangerous crossroads, and in addition to all your regular duties, you are all on the front lines of this battle. I encourage each of you who still believes in our freedoms, our judicial system, and our proud history to stand strong against these destructive forces. The silent majority does still support you. Thank you.
David Rango.
Hello, council. My name is David Rango. I'm a Walnut Creek resident and a retired Walnut Creek PD sergeant. Walnut Creek PD is comprised of men and women who enter the profession to serve and protect the community, who value good work, honor, and integrity. One of these individuals was Officer Will Appel. During his 10 years at the PD, Officer Appel worked various patrol duties. He was the face of neighborhood watch meetings and active shooter school personnel trainings. Appel was every city's ideal officer, tactical, decisive, and compassionate. Depending on the situation at hand, Appel knew how to handle it. He was so well-respected and accomplished that in 2015, he was named Employee of the Year by the City of Walnut Creek. It is this community's and this PD's loss that Officer Appel became disillusioned on how the mission to protect our citizens from dangerous acts was compromised by unclear and conflicting orders. Officer Appel resigned on September 2020 and is now a patrol officer for another city, once again believing in and practicing the mission to serve and protect. Soon after Officer Appel resigned, another of the great Walnut Creek PD officers also resigned. Council, your officers and your community need genuine leadership at the helm of the PD. We are lacking that leadership now. Your residents cannot afford to lose any more Officer Appels, but we will if this leadership vacuum continues. So please, get us a good chief. We're tired of politicians, we're tired of yes people, we want somebody that's a good leader. Also, as for the PD website, apparently Lieutenant Beth Johnson, if you look at the website, is still, still there. She's been a captain in Martinez for quite a while. So that again adds to the incompetence of Chief, interim chief, Jay Hill. Plus, I cannot believe we're paying him more money per diem, chief's pay after December 27. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucas Carboni.
Hello. I'm calling for continued city work regarding a 24/7 county-wide mental health crisis response program named after Miles Hall. I believe all city council candidates elected this cycle promised this, as well as police reform, in efforts to diversify what is unfortunately a historically segregated city. In funding these efforts and the previous equity and public safety initiatives, we need the utmost transparency. I'd also like to talk about housing policy in this city, critical in efforts to, to both ensure desegregation and, when done correctly, combat the climate emergency. As I'm sure the council is aware, the state's mandating our city grows housing stock by about 20% in the next RENA cycle, and I believe the city needs an equity and climate-oriented plan to meet this. Eliminating car parking minimums and instead mandating bicycle parking minimums and transit passes for residents of new construction, as I believe Berkeley's considering in January, is one way to densify housing and reduce emissions in new construction, as is banning natural gas in new construction. Obviously, that's not related to RENA, but it's still a good climate priority. Also related to RENA, legalizing low and mid-rise multifamily housing in currently low-density walkable neighborhoods near transit, like the Almond Shui Overlay Zone or some areas west of I-680, also helps to meet these numbers in a climate equity-focused way without, I believe, running into Measure A in most circumstances. Lastly, I'll acknowledge that we are on traditional Chichenia, Aloney, Bayou Inmiwak, and I believe Yakut's land, and thank these traditional custodians of the land and urge the city council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, we have Lydia Jung. Next speaker, we have Lydia Jung.
Hello, may I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Lydia Jung, and I am here to continue to urge the city council to provide specifics and transparency in regards to the equity and public safety initiatives listed on the city's website and how funds budgeted for those programs have been spent or will be spent. I also want to continue to remind the city council of their promises to support and prioritize equity and inclusion through the development of a 24/7 countywide non-police mental health crisis response program. I'd also could like to continue to emphasize that the public should be made aware of this program once it is established, ideally with signs in public places like bus stops and the Bart Station, so people will be aware that they can contact the number of the 24/7 countywide mental health crisis response program if they see someone who may be experiencing a mental health crisis. While I do not live in Walnut Creek, I have visited the city on numerous occasions for extracurricular activities and a part-time job. And the same can be said of many of my peers in Arinda. And I believe it is probable to think that the steps Walnut Creek undertakes in terms of police reform and mental health crisis response, both countywide and citywide, will have an impact on the residents and policies of nearby towns. And I urge the city to take this potential impact into account and make sure it is a positive impact by prioritizing the development of a comprehensive non-police mental health crisis response program and being transparent about the way it carries out this and other reforms to the law enforcement system to help ensure that it protects the safety of marginalized citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Wally.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Good evening. My name is Catherine Wally, and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. My pronouns are she/her. I was heartened by the recent county broadcast summarizing key findings and recommendations resulting from the Community Crisis Response Workshop. I'm grateful for this team's work, as well as those community members who continue to advocate for a 24/7 non-police crisis response to be named after Miles Hall. Of note in this broadcast was the emphasis on inclusivity and listening to as many perspectives as possible. As this process moves forward, I urge those in positions of power to continuously make this a priority, ensuring that people whose expertise is rooted in a lived reality not only have a seat at the table, but that they are truly heard, valued, and compensated for their expertise. While I am a strong proponent of a non-police response, I am under no illusion that by simply replacing a police response with a non-police response, we will suddenly eliminate issues of racism, transphobia, misogyny, fatphobia, homophobia, ableism, and the like. These issues are societal ones, so the team must take care to work against entrenched systems to avoid reproducing some of the harms we see with our current police response to behavioral health calls. I was reminded of this recently when reading a post by social psychologist Devin Price, who stated that they are, quote, "Friends with a lot of mental health practitioners who have made it their life's work to swim against this tide. It's often worth looking for good therapists because they do exist, but the system recruits and produces so many incurious oppressive ones. The refrain that everyone should be in therapy, cops should be replaced with licensed social workers, et cetera, ignores the fact that if you're not the kind of person most therapists are inclined to like and can comprehend easily, mental health providers can be dangerous to you," end quote. So too, I ask that our team in Contra Costa make it their work to also swim against this tide as they proceed with the next phases of establishing a 24/7 mobile crisis response. Let's make diversity, equity, and inclusion central to this process, as well as the ultimate final product of what that 24/7 mobile crisis response looks like and who is composed in it. Let's make it a part of that process every step of the way. Thank you so much for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moxie Marsh.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, please go ahead.
Perfect, okay. Hi, my name is Moxie. I live in Walnut Creek, and I go to Los Lomis High School. It's finals week, and every time something important happens at school, I can't help but think of Miles Hall. During his fall finals junior year, none of his classmates were anticipating that he would be murdered at 23. As I join Zooms, and hopefully when I soon get to enter classrooms again, I am reminded that Miles Hall could have been any of the students I am sitting with, and that any of these students could also face Miles' fate one day. The mental health crisis response we're working towards in this city can help those who have not yet been mortally wronged by the system, but it's also important to recognize the needs of the people who have been hurt to get us to this point. In the process of redefining a system, it can seem like the name is the most trivial part. But to someone who has lost their child, the acknowledgement of wrongdoing and the commemoration of their child can make life a little easier and can make systemic change a more tangible reality. We have to acknowledge and remember our history to learn from it. To let Miles Hall's name and story fade back into obscure local tragedy would be a terrible injustice. And if we want to help our community through the tragedies they have faced at the hands of this police department, we have to listen to what they need from us. And if that means naming a mental health crisis response after the only person this city's police department has killed in the last eight years, that wish should be honored, and justice for that family, as they see fit, should come paramount to the comfort of white citizens who do not understand and refuse to empathize with their neighbor's reality and the pain that this family has gone through and continues to go through. Justice for Miles Hall, change for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Laura Halpin.
Hello, city council members. How are you? My name is Laura Halpin. I am a Walnut Creek, longtime Walnut Creek citizen and a member of the friends of Scott, Alexis, and Ton Hall. I wanted to come on tonight just to acknowledge the really incredible process of the value stream mapping that took place at the county level. A number of you participated, most notably Dan Buckshai. And it was a really impressive process to see that the emphasis was placed on inclusion, on vulnerability of those participants, the inclusion of all stakeholders, to look at problems in all of their nuance and complexity, and also by centering people who are most affected by mental health issues. We also recently went through the process of the listening meetings that were co-sponsored by the city and FOSAP. And again, we're building skills as a community to listen to one another, to work together to understand the most marginalized, the process of building trust, the process of building belonging in our city and public safety. And so I just want to acknowledge that we are actually working together, that we're learning how to listen non-defensively, we're learning about the importance of facilitation. And I also want to acknowledge that none of this would have happened had the Hall family not chosen to turn their pain into purpose, and that it's because of their engagement that we are making this very real, complex progress. So I'm very thankful for their presence in our community. I'm thankful for FOSAP. I'm thankful for the progress we're making.
Thank you.
OG Strogatz.
Yes, can you hear me?
You can hear you. Please go ahead, OG.
Great. I'm OG Strogatz, a longtime resident of Walnut Creek. I speak in support of FOSAP, friends of Scott, Alexis, and Ton Hall. A priority on which our city and community agree is the establishment of 24/7 non-law enforcement mental health crisis support in our county. FOSAP champions the naming of this support after Miles Hall, who was killed near his home in Walnut Creek at age 23 in the midst of a mental health crisis by Walnut Creek police officers. Other Contra Costa cities and the county endorse naming the program after Miles, but not yet does this city council. Why is the naming of the program after Miles so important? We all look to names to recall what we acknowledge to be fundamental truths. Names also remind us about who and what inspire us to bring out the best in ourselves and others, prompting us to recommit to living in a purposeful, compassionate way. In naming the proposed program after Miles, we acknowledge the needless tragedy and unrecoverable loss associated with his death. Further, as an overwhelmingly white, privileged community, we acknowledge holding the implicit biases of racism and the stigma of mental illness. When we say his name, we remember Miles as a loving, beautiful, creative soul. Saying his name, Miles Hall, moves us to honor his memory in two ways. One, with a program that will seek to ensure every hour, every day, that people in mental health crises receive excellent prompt care. And two, for those of us who hold implicit biases, that we engage in the crucial work to understand and grow beyond them so we can become a community grounded in justice, equal opportunity, and love of one's fellow human beings. I ask the city council to endorse naming the proposed 24/7 non-law enforcement mental health crisis support program after Miles Hall because Miles and his blessed memory are that important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mara Flynn Rothman.
I'm going to quickly mention to all of those in attendance, one last call here for raising your hand if you want to speak during public communications. Now is the time to do it. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mara, go ahead, please.
Great, okay. So I'm calling on behalf of FOSAP as well. And what I'd like to do is request that we have transparency around the dollars allocated and the dollars spent for the city equity and the public safety initiatives that are described on the website. I want to request that we have police accountability. I also want to advocate for the 24/7 non-police countywide response program named after Miles. And then I just also want to remind all the council members about the campaign commitments to responsiveness, transparency, mental health, public safety, and diversity. Thank you.
Thank you.
User Black Lives Matter.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Could you please state your name and city, please?
My name is Rai Webb. I live in Martinez, but I work in Walnut Creek. I don't know how long it's been since they've been asking for this response, the mental health response. It's been months, and it just seems like it's taking a really long time. And I'm, that's pretty sad considering how quickly the response with riot gear Walnut Creek PD has managed to have. People are getting COVID, and I see food kitchen, or I'm sorry, pantry, food pantries going up all over surrounding cities. And it's just to get money to go towards cops is, and their budget is really easy, but to get it to help out the actual citizens, the people, it seems like it's a real struggle. As you might know, Moxie Marsh, I just, I have to shout her out. She comes to a lot of these meetings. She is in high school, and she's kind of my hero. And you know, the fact that she brings up that Miles Hall could be one of those kids is in, you know, the class, the halls, that's really real. And the fact that we're all going through a pandemic that is absolutely causing more stress for the kids at home who are watching their parents struggle to make ends meet, to put food on the table. And we're begging for a response that can help with the mental health for people instead of sending cops with badges and guns to maybe care for the people, care, not cops. So I really hope that you will listen to people finally. You have a bunch of youth that are showing up, and it gives me a lot of hope for the future to see these young people take such care while you adults are kind of twiddling your thumbs. So I really hope that there comes a point where you guys show up and do what the Hall family has laid out very, very clearly to keep Miles Hall's name alive and to see that no other family goes through that.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers, Susie?
Mayor, I don't see any additional speakers.
Okay, we'll therefore close out the public comments. And I do have one quick question I'd like to ask city manager Buckshai. Just, I know that this is a countywide initiative that we're looking at when it comes to a 24/7 mental health crisis response. Can you just give a very brief timeline of where that stands with the county? I know that we've got a month before the next meeting, so maybe just giving people an update of where that stands, because we are being directed by the county on this.
Yes, certainly, Mayor. Dan Buckshai is city manager. So as some of the speakers were not aware, but many are, there's been substantial effort on this front for quite some time. The effort was actually initiated in January of 2020, but unfortunately, it was postponed a bit because of COVID. So efforts resumed this summer. There is a coalition of all 19 cities in Contra Costa working with the county health services, and the county health department, county health services is the lead. What I also noted, these are the exact same folks that are overseeing the COVID response and are also planning to contribute millions of vaccines, shots throughout the county. So their time is very precious. However, they've still made this effort for 24/7 non-law enforcement response, an extremely high priority right up there with the COVID response. So kudos to the county for being able to manage both of those efforts. Well, that said, there's been considerable effort for the last several months in order to do what some refer to as the value stream mapping process, which is effectively mapping out how things currently work, the as-is environment, if you will. So this involved working with over 50 different organizations. It involved gathering data from call data from multiple police departments and from the county that are within Contra Costa, doing ride-alongs, which was certainly complicated because of COVID, but doing virtual ride-alongs with officers, with the core team who respond to homeless, with the existing mental health response team that the county has in place, and also with dispatch, and then also working closely with individuals who have experienced the mental health system of care that currently exists firsthand in order to gather both qualitative and quantitative information in order to have a full 360 perspective and view of what is currently occurring. That's what was reported out on November 20th, was the state of the as-is. Work is now being conducted to create the to-be environment, the desired environment. And there were four key areas that came out of, that were identified through this process as key focal points. I'm not going to run through all of those now, but there will be the next update, at least publicly, with a broader group will be at the mayor's conference in February. It's intended to provide an update to all 19 cities and the county at the same time so that cities can start making informed decisions about how they'd like to proceed. Also, working to seek funding through the state for a pilot program to get this up and running. As you can imagine, this will cost a lot of money to get this going. And so that is an avenue we're pursuing. And in addition, I do want to emphasize that the residents of Contra Costa did vote to support the Measure X sales tax for Contra Costa County, which includes the incorporated and unincorporated areas. The county is estimated to receive about $80 million of additional funds through that sales tax. And there is a strong desire to have some of that be allocated towards this program to help get it up and running. So beyond that, I don't see this as being an all or nothing. What the team is currently doing now is looking at these four primary areas, and there are subsets within each of these areas for what could be implemented sooner, what would take more time, more money, more coordination. So the thought is not to wait and bundle it all and, you know, wait a year and a half to get it all in place. The idea is what can be done sooner, some quick wins, if you will, and changes. And then obviously recognizing other changes are going to take considerable more time. So I don't have firm dates for you when these exact matters are going to be completed. That is being developed right now. What I'm anticipating is that shortly after the New Year, after the health team has worked on getting some of these vaccinations distributed to everybody, we'll have a more detailed timeline from when we can anticipate the next steps. But some more information in early January, and then a more comprehensive update that will be provided to the mayor's conference the first Thursday in February.
Thank you, Dan. You prompted some questions. So Cindy Darling, it looks like you had your finger up first.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. We also had a lot of questions about the listening session and the training. And I know the listening sessions have been concluded. And when do we expect to have those come back to council? And when are we going to see kind of how the training is going to be put together?
Two separate issues. And yes, so the listening sessions, the actual sessions themselves are complete. The consultant that was hired is working on creating the report. We are currently targeting to hold a meeting in January. Ideally, we'd like to hold a special meeting that we can focus just on this issue. And I believe we're working to try to schedule that likely the third or fourth week of January, but it's dependent upon schedules of not only the council and key staff and other members of the community, but the consultant as well. So as soon as we get that date pinned down, we will do so. In terms of training, we're looking at multiple phases. There's already some training, enhanced training for PD that's underway related to mental health response in addition to what they already receive. And then we are also working at doing additional implicit bias and diversity and inclusion training for all city staff, not just PD. We're in the midst of reviewing applications or responses, if you will, to request for proposals from a few vendors and looking to sample some of their classes and then ultimately decide upon a trainer, get those going in January, February. And the goal is to have all city staff trained, at least through the initial phase of training, by June 30th of 21.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I would just add, I think there was a speaker asked about how much money's been spent to date of the $600,000, and to date, $31,000 has been spent.
Cindy Silva?
At the mayor's conference in February, do you think the county would be able to respond to the question about how, if and how they would vet potential names for this program?
Yeah, so a couple of things that I should bring up that I do want to clarify, some statements that were made that based upon the discussions I've had, I don't think they're accurate. It's my understanding that no city has committed to the naming of a program yet. And in fact, no city has even taken the matter up on their agenda to have that discussion, nor do I believe the county has done that as well. So it's my understanding that nobody is discussing, or I should say committing, to any type of a name. Also, the discussion that has been occurring about potential naming that's been fairly limited candidly amongst the county and the cities is that the thought is premature to that we should be focusing our efforts on creating a program that's going to help people and not spending a lot of time on who it's named after. And there's also been some considerable discussion that if we want to truly have a regional approach that is inclusive of all areas of the county, that naming any program after any one individual would be exclusive of others. As we've heard in these meetings that occurred as part of the value stream mapping, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals with mental health issues who have died in Contra Costa over many years. And there are many families who are struggling tremendously as a result of those challenges and who would love to have their, that program named after their family. So selecting just one family may prove to have some very important members who have been involved disengage from the process. So that's part of the discussion that is occurring. And again, the goal of this is to have an inclusive program in which everyone feels as if they are welcome to participate and benefit from the ultimate program that's put into place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. It's time to move on to our council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. So first, closed session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. There were no reportable actions from closed sessions this evening. And Mayor, if I may, just one moment. Councilmember Silva asked a question earlier about the public art fee and the restrictions on the use of it. That is set forth in the municipal code. There are very specific criteria that guide that.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager reports?
Yeah, Dan Buckshai, City Manager. And again, as my role as emergency services director, just a quick update on the pandemic. As everybody is aware, there were the additional restrictions that were put in place that the county, Contra Costa County and a few others in the Bay Area chose to adopt the regional restrictions that were, you know, put in place or outlined by the state. It's my understanding, you know, the driver in which we would have had to go to these additional restrictions for the state is when our ICU capacity or intensive care units at hospitals reaches 15%. I believe in the Bay Area and the five counties that selected to go more proactively at the time, we were around 20%. And we're now at about 17 or 16%. And it's estimated that we may hit the 15% threshold in the next week or so. So that said, it would no longer be under local discretion of county health officers, would be at the discretion of the state if we hit that 15%. So two things that I just wanted to note on that front briefly. One, while as a region, we had been moving from the most restrictive purple to red to orange, we had begun to open up some of our operations from purely remote to in-person at the city. That has now changed, and anything and everything we can provide remotely, we are. We are only having those employees that need to do their jobs in person, work in person, such as our police officers, our, I mean, some of our public works employees, our inspectors and those types. But anything that's more discretionary, that work is being done remotely. And then also, I just do want to emphasize for everybody who's, you know, listening, obviously, these restrictions are extremely challenging. We're in an extremely difficult time. And what I want to convey is, you know, based upon what I'm hearing from the health officer, I think it's going to continue for a while. What's being projected now is that we may not reach peak cases until at least mid-January, if not a little bit beyond that. So while the current orders are in place through June 4th, I think there's a very high likelihood they will be extended based upon the projections that are being made by the health officers. So that's what we're anticipating at the city and preparing for, for our operations. I offer that up as others may want to take that into consideration as well. And then just on a more personal level, I just do want to acknowledge how difficult this is for individuals who, one, may be suffering from being at home alone in isolation, dealing with emotional mental health issues. If you are, I strongly encourage you to reach out and call 211, where you can receive support services and be directed to those that can help. And then also to the many businesses that are unable to operate right now. And it's an extremely difficult timeframe, and there's actually an item on the agenda later this evening to discuss that. And that is my update at this point, Mayor.
Next, we have city council member reports on activities, AB 1234, council member assignments and various activities and upcoming events. So I will pick Mayor Protem Francois to go first.
I thought you might do that. Thank you, Mayor. I have a few, about half dozen items to report on. It was a busy two to three weeks. So starting off, on November 19th, I watched the report out from the county health services department. As the city manager referred to earlier, very impressed with the level of engagement and activity there. And the city manager gave kudos to the health department, the county health department, which are definitely in order. But I would also like to give kudos to Mr. Buckshai and to his colleagues and in other city manager departments that are also working hard on seeing this to fruition. And the focus areas that he didn't mention, that I quickly will, that the group had identified on was to designate a single number to call for a behavioral health crisis response. Number two, establish a mobile crisis 24/7 response. Number three, evaluate non-police mobile crisis response team composition. And four, identify alternative destinations for those experiencing behavioral health crises. So kudos to everyone at the county and the other cities that are working on this. I think this is going to be a remarkable program once it gets going, which it's already well on its way toward doing. On December 2nd, as a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee along with the mayor, I had the privilege of attending the final listening session, which was a collective listening and dialogue session. We had story sharing in breakout rooms as well as empathy mapping, and I was impressed with the amount of sharing that was provided and the amount of listening that happened and the facilitation by the consultant. On December 3rd, I attended virtually the annual employee recognition event. And so we acknowledged several employees, including those with 25 years of service. I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder, including the mayor here, by naming these folks, which would be Tony Kilcoin of the Lesher Center, Chuck Montgomery with our Parks Division, and our own Kevin Sapien, our Arts and Rec Director, 25 years with the city of Walnut Creek. So remarkable accomplishments. And then our employees of the year, Carolyn Jackson, who's a Community Relations Manager with our Arts and Rec Department, and Sebastian Paulson with our Traffic Department and Public Works. I want to thank all of them for their hard work. And also give a shout out to Alan Carion, who got the Golden Glove Award for staving off a leak on the third floor of City Hall. So thank you for your quick thinking, Alan, and for all our city employees for what you've done, especially during this year. I attended the Ad Hoc Committee on Community Benefits. I'll let my colleague, Councilmember Silva, give the update on that. On December 5th, I attended the Sister Cities Holiday Gathering and Wine Auction, which included a fun recounting of the history of Buena Vista Winery in Napa County. On December 10th, I attended the Recycle Smart Board Meeting along with my colleague, Councilmember Silva. We received the annual diversion report, and I'm pleased to report that our county is exceeding, we're getting an A+ for our diversion of keeping materials out of the landfill. The benchmark is 50%. We achieved 64%. So we're well on our way to doing what the state has asked us to do in terms of keeping items out of the landfill. We had an update on our collection rates, which will be formally adopted in January. Will be a slight increase in those rates due to the charges that we're experiencing for recycling, given the closure of the markets in China and Asia to those processing of those materials. But I'm very pleased to report that Walnut Creek pays, is at the very bottom of the list and pays the lowest in terms of garbage rates among all East Bay cities. We also took up an action item to support White Pony Express on their edible food recovery grant application to CalRecycle. As many of you know, White Pony is a cherished nonprofit based in Pleasant Hill that does the great work of gathering food from supermarkets and restaurants and others and delivering it to people in need. This grant program will not only help them expand their footprint and their program, but will also help us as a county and a region comply with a new state law that we get at least 20% of edible food out of the organic stream environment and get it on people's plates where it belongs. Finally, yesterday, I attended the, my final DRAA meeting as a liaison, and we received a program update of most note this year was, and this is, you know, this has been an extremely hard year for the Lesher Center. Normally, they would have something like 850 performances attended by 350,000 people. None of that was possible this year, or at least for most of this year. So they quickly, with this great board led by their executive director, Peggy White, kind of pivoted and did a series of virtual programs that I reported on earlier this year, the Country Strong Program, Music Connects the World, which was a jazz program. And then finally, the High School Notes Program, which was the a cappella groups from various regional high schools. In Walnut Creek, it was the Contra Costa School for Performing Arts and Northgate High School. And if you haven't had a chance to watch it, it's very inspiring and moving. I would encourage all of you to do it. You can see it at any time at drraa.org. They're also, they also had an update on their Paved the Way program, which is a fundraiser for their, for the front of the center there. And then Sarah McKenzie, who was the star of the Music Connects the World, was very gracious and generous with her time and answered questions, kind of a behind the scenes on that, that event. I believe that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Haskew.
Thank you. So I got to say goodbye to the Rossmore Gold Romaine Foundation Board and all the people who listen in. It was a really nice experience to be the liaison with them. And Matt, I want you to take very good care of those people. They're very special to me. I promise I'll take care of DRAA as well. I was reappointed by Transpac as a Commissioner on Contra Costa Transportation Authority. And because one of the commissioners from Transpac didn't, one of the members from Transpac decided not to run again, we lost Julie Pierce, who had, oh gosh, her work started in 1970-something, I swear, and knows more about transportation than anybody else in the whole wide world. In any case, I had to, I covered for her, for her meeting. And then I also attended my planning commission, planning committee meeting. The committee at the planning talked about some reports that related to transportation issues, enrichment, and a separate one in Antioch and Pittsburgh, sort of how to get people into newer, easier ways to move themselves around. There's the, the other committee reviewed their legislative efficacy, bragged yet again about how great they had done with the Highway 680 redo because of COVID and not so many cars and getting it done like a year faster. So they saved a million dollars. And then they followed that up with the difficulties that they have run into at the project, Highway 680. For, there were lots of problems that they couldn't discover until they started to do the repair. And so they're trying to learn how to avoid those problems later on. I think, I do want to point out that I think since December 1st or thereabouts, we have, we have sworn in three new police officers, and several of us attended those swearings. And so we still have, we still are attracting good people to come and work in our PD. That's it for me.
Thank you, Luella. Councilmember Darling?
Well, I've been learning how to be a city council member. And mostly that, so far, that has not included any meetings other than attending the employee appreciation meeting that Councilmember Francois talked about. It mostly means reading the council member manual, calling staff and asking silly questions. And one of the lessons I learned tonight is that when you have an agenda item on restaurants and you go pick up your to-go order earlier in the day, you're going to get questions. So you've got to be ready. So I'm still learning, drinking from the fire hose, and I appreciate everybody who's been patient and helped me understand what I'm doing. And hopefully, I could become effective.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure this will be the last meeting where you don't have as much to say. And Councilmember Silva?
Oh, thank you very much. First, I want to thank Mayor Protem for his report on Recycle Smart or the Solid Waste Authority. One quick note, he said the county diversion rate, it's really for the Central Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority, which is six agencies. It's Walnut Creek, Lafayette, Arrenda Maraga, Danville, and the unincorporated areas of the county in those regions that we achieve the 64% diversion rate. So I don't want to, you know, make it sound like it's the entire county and all 19 cities. The, the Ad Hoc Committee on the Community Benefits Program, which the Mayor Protem and I were appointed to at the November 17th meeting, has met twice since the last meeting. We are really analyzing all aspects of the Community Benefits Program, points-based, site-specific, flexible, negotiable, and all of the impacts of the zoning issues, the sequoia, environmental issues. And we are working hard on this. And I really want to thank staff for all of their assistance with this, city attorneys group, the Assistant City Manager, the Ethan Binnardankle and Andrew Smith. And we are working hard to return to city council as soon as possible, maybe even January 19th, because it's tentatively on the calendar for that. So maybe we need to strive for that. But I think we're getting closer and closer. As a third item, I would mention, one of the public comments earlier this evening was about the food need in our community, and we do recognize that. And I want to circle back to Community Service Day in early October with the funds that we raised that day, as well as the nearly 38,000 pounds of food collected. That actually, we received notice from the Food Bank that helped to feed, create 70,000 meals. So thank you again to the community at large for all of the work on that. I have been the liaison to Walnut Creek Downtown. I attended their December Board Meeting. And I guess I would say simply that their primary concern was around the restaurants and all of the constraints that were being instituted by the county at that point, vis-à-vis the reduction, in order to reduce the spread of COVID. I also pointed out at that meeting that we did know that the hospital, the level of hospitalization had risen significantly in the John Muir system. And so that this was really something that the county felt that they had to do. The December meeting of the East Bay Regional Communication System Authority, of which I'm a board member as appointed by the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference, was, at that meeting, we approved financing to make, to continue to make the transition from the old technology to the new TDMA technology, which reduces the incidences of busy signals, which is really not what happens in a radio system, but it's basically not connecting quite fast enough. And that meant basically about $10 million in loans, leasing costs that we're accruing to the agency. But fortunately, that does not change the way the financing works with Motorola. It does not change what we pay per radio in each of our cities for the use of the system. In mid-November was the annual City Summit of the National League of Cities, of which we are a member as a city. There were two seminars or programs that I attended virtually that I thought were of importance to mention. And then they're really relevant to work that we're currently doing. And hopefully, we can somehow integrate some of the things that I have learned at those and pursue those. One was a presentation on the National League of Cities REAL Program, R E A L, which stands for Race Equity and Leadership. This is a program that the National League of Cities was called upon to develop, starting in 2012. And it was really related to what happened out in Ferguson, Missouri. And over time, they have become the national expert for those issues in municipal and local government. It's a very precise niche. There are probably only two or three organizations in the country that does that. A lot do it in the private sector, but only two or three actually do it in the public sector. And I think probably, as we've been learning, there's a difference between consulting for the public sector as opposed to consulting for the private sector in the way information is shared, et cetera. It was very informative and more to follow on that. The other seminar workshop that I attended was on a non-public response, not non-PD response to mental health crises. And the primary speakers at that were the City Manager of the City of Eugene, Oregon, talking about the Cohoots Program, which as we know is not just the city of Eugene, Oregon, is actually the region of Eugene, Springfield, and the surrounding area. So it is really a regional program. Much to learn there. And then the Police Chief of the City of Denver talked about a program that they are modeling on the Cohoots Program, that they are currently rolling out one district at a time. So it really reinforces what the City Manager mentioned maybe 10 minutes ago about having to take bite-sized chunks of any of these new programs and rolling them out iteratively so you don't take off, take on more than you can actually successfully achieve. Then the last I would mention, last Friday was the first meeting of the year of the Cal Cities Board of Directors. And we adopted our four strategic priorities for the coming year, as well as two initiatives. The strategic priorities for Cal Cities probably mirror many of what were things we're talking about. Really, it's COVID-19, both the public health response as well as the economic recovery issues that are ongoing in our communities. The second is housing, affordability of housing and homelessness, and really intertwined with the economic recovery from COVID-19 is the number of people who are at risk of losing their housing and of becoming homeless and how to address that. The third is improving state and local coordination and planning to strengthen our community, our ability to respond to disasters, whether it's wildfires, earthquakes, et cetera, both to plan for and then respond to. And the fourth strategic priority is to protect and modernize critical infrastructure. For those who have not been involved with the Cal Cities, formerly really called the League of California Cities, but we're going to try to remember to use the correct new term. Cal Cities, they have two priorities. One is to advocate on behalf of the 483 cities in the state of California at the state and federal level for legislation that helps us deliver the services at the local level that we need for our communities. And the second is to provide an education platform so that we can share best practices amongst our cities. And we don't have to always reinvent the wheel. I think one of the, and I think that's been invaluable for us, being both part of the National League of Cities as well as the Cal Cities Organization here in California. There are also two initiatives that we are leading off with this year at Cal Cities. One is called Advancing Equity. And it really is to look at this as a statewide initiative on that issue. And it's certainly good. There may be much for us to learn. There was a presentation by one of our board members, who's the City Clerk in the City of Temecula, talking about the last six months of what the work they've been doing on that initiative in Temecula and the work, how they worked with the National League of Cities to bring that program into Temecula. And they were able to do it in a way that is an extension of their membership. And I was able to have a private conversation with that board colleague of mine and the pricing structure for that and the speed at which they could deliver that was amazingly fast and amazingly economical in comparison, because it is, has been built with all of our monies from our membership dues. And the second special initiative is really on how to respond to the calls for policing reform. What should we be doing in that arena? And so they're building both of those initiatives out through task, task forces and working groups. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. Well, as people probably heard, I was at a number of these events as well and, and participation areas. Couple of things that were mentioned. One is that if anybody got the City Manager Newsletter, they received information that there is now, the Walnut Creek Free Downtown WiFi is now expanded up and down Broadway and into Civic Park. So there's some good news, which, when people are able to go back downtown and we don't have the shelter in place, you have expanded free downtown WiFi. At the Mayor's Conference a couple of weeks ago, there was a presentation on youth outreach for COVID-19 vaccines through youth ambassadors and micro-influencers. Our own Chair of Youth Commission, Hadil Jaudri, was in attendance. And we'll bring this up to our youth commission for more information and potential involvement in this program. Just a way of being able to reach out to some other people that we might not normally be able to reach through our normal means of communication. And then lastly, it's an update for County Connection. County Connection will be hosting public hearings in January to provide more details about the proposed service changes. All the meetings will be conducted via Zoom. And for Walnut Creek, this will be on Tuesday, January 5th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. We'll post this information on the city's social media channels. So more information to come on that. And that's my report. We are at just about 8 o'clock, and we've been going since 4 o'clock. So I'm going to call for a 15-minute recess to allow those of us that need to either eat, drink, or do something else in the next quarter of an hour. We'll reconvene here at 8:15.
Wow, we're all so prompt.
Ten dollars to the first person who can identify someone moving down Broadway Plaza Street.
I thought it was Rich Carlston, actually, the guy who just walked by.
Okay.
Fifteen seconds?
All right.
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing item for the consideration of proposed urgency ordinance, extending the provisions of ordinance number 2203 by one year, amending Title X planning and zoning of the Walnut Creek Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of accessory dwelling units. At this time, I invite staff to provide the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. That's a very exciting title for a project of which I will have a very brief presentation for you tonight. As was mentioned, this is for a time extension to our existing interim ordinance for ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Just a quick bit of background, as you'll recall, at the beginning of the year, a new state law went into effect regulating ADUs. And the impacts of that were that if the city did not immediately amend its local regulations, our local regulations would be invalidated in their entirety. So there was an urgency ordinance adopted in December by this council to maintain local control and design standards to the extent allowable under the new state law. This new state law is a, I will say it's a complex law in that not just your typical complexity, but there are some internal inconsistencies, some vagueness and a few things. And in accordance with that, it actually took until September for the California Department of Housing and Community Development to issue their guidance on implementing the new state law and amending local regulations accordingly. Of course, I'm sure HCD staff, much like the City of Walnut Creek staff, was impacted by the COVID pandemic and staff resources having to be redirected to respond to that. What we have tonight is it's a one-year extension. That one-year timeline, however, is something that's actually specified in state law. We don't have the ability to do an alternate length of time. And in fact, staff does not anticipate the adoption of the final regulations to take nearly that long. A good amount of the work is already complete and we expect to start our work with the commissions early in this coming year. So with that, our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance, the draft ordinance before you, which would extend the provisions of the existing urgency ordinance adopted originally as ordinance number 2203. This would be a one-year extension. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Do we have any questions from the council? I see nobody with any questions. All right. Thank you, Andy. So do we have a member of the public? Any member of the public that would wish to provide public comments at this time? Please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, if you'd like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide a public comment on this public hearing item, please raise your hand now. Do we have anybody? City Clerk?
Mayor, I don't see any members of the public wanting to comment on this item.
Okay, so if there's any council members that would like to provide any comments on this, please raise your hand.
Mayor, may I move to introduce and waive reading and adopt the urgency ordinance, extending provisions of ordinances 2020, 2203 and 2204 by one year effective December 16th, my birthday, to amended portions of the Title X planning and zoning of Walnut Creek Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of accessory dwelling units? And you can leave the my birthday part out.
I'll second the motion, but if it takes us a year, then we have to buy her a birthday present.
We have a motion in a second. City Clerk, can you please take the vote?
Councilmember Haskew?
Hi.
Councilmember Silva?
Hi.
Councilmember Darling?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Hi.
Mayor Wilk?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, that one was quick. Next on the agenda is a consideration item titled Fiscal Year 2020 Year End Results and Audited Financial Statements. And at this time, I invite staff to provide the staff presentation.
We should have our Administrative Services Director Kirsten LaCasse and our Budget Manager Katie Brunner signing momentarily.
Right. We were so fast in the last item, we caught them unaware.
Good evening, Mayor Wilk and Mayor Pro Tem Francois, members of the council, Kirsten LaCasse, Administrative Services Director. Tonight, I am going to present to you the fiscal year end 2020 results and the CAFR for the year ending June 30, 2020. And that was issued last week on December 10. Excuse me. Tonight, we'll first go over the general fund year-end results in detail, including revenues and expenditure results. Then we're going to talk about the parking fund and Boundary Yoke Golf Course Fund. We'll discuss the key sections and highlights of the CAFR and then cover the next steps for both reports. So I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone where we were when the pandemic began. So on March 16th, the county issued its first shelter-in-place order, which closed all non-essential businesses. Ultimately, these orders were extended through May 31st, and still, non-essential businesses remain closed. When we brought forward recommendations for budget reductions, we assumed the shelter-in-place would remain in effect through June 30th of 2020. As a result, we were anticipating a $13 million loss in revenue, which included a 23% sales tax decline compared to fiscal year 19 results, I'm sorry, receipts. Those losses resulted in a $10.1 million budgetary gap in the general fund. And then on May 5th, council adopted one-time reductions to the budget of $6.5 million, as well as the ability to use reserves up to $3.6 million, which included suspending contributions to reserves in order to close that budget gap. So what's changed since May 5th and how did those things affect our results at year end? Well, there were early loosening of restrictions by the county, in some cases with only 24-hour notice. So on May 19th, they allowed, excuse me, curbside retail for non-essential businesses. On June 3rd, they allowed retail and offices to open indoors. On June 5th, we saw more outdoor activities permitted, like dining, pools and worship. On June 17th, salons and barber shops were reopened. The fiscal year 20 results show that we lost 7.7, the actual results now show that we lost 7.7 million of our revenue between April 1st and June 30th, which included a 7% loss of sales tax when you compare it to fiscal year 19. Our budgetary gap was now approximately $5 million. And while we projected to save $6.5 million, we actually saved $7 million due to the restrictions in spending for essential purchases only and a hiring freeze. That's the city implemented with the shelter-in-place orders. So with those changes, we ended the year with a contribution to fund balance of approximately $2.5 million. So as I mentioned, on May 5th, council authorized the use of reserves up to $3.4 million. Then we received higher sales tax revenue of $4.2 million, higher other revenues of $1.1 million, which included property tax and interest earnings. And we achieved additional expenditure savings of approximately $600,000. So that gets us to our estimated contribution to fund balance of $2.5 million. Additionally, there were reclassifications of existing fund balance of approximately $100,000. So you will see $2.6 million in unassigned fund balance presented in the CAFR later on this evening. So this table compares the projected loss to the actual loss in revenues for fiscal year 20 by revenue type. As of May 5th, we were projecting $13 million loss in revenue. But our actual sales tax loss is $2.6 million, which is down 7% over fiscal year 19. We held property tax flat, but received about $400,000 additional over budget. Transient occupancy tax was down more than anticipated by $1.3 million. And the loss of department revenue was $4.6 million. The other revenues came in higher than budget by about $400,000, due primarily to interest earnings. So the projected loss column, as I mentioned, reflects the $13 million versus our fiscal year actual loss of $7.7 million. It's important to acknowledge that while we lost less than we projected, $7.7 million loss in revenue over roughly a three-month period is very significant. So when we look at sales tax comparison by sector, you can see we had losses in all sectors compared to fiscal year 19, with the exception of non-restaurant food and the county pool. Just as a reminder, the county pool is a portion of sales tax that we get for online sales and is roughly 85% less than what we would get for an in-person sale here in Walnut Creek. The largest losses we saw in fiscal year 20 came from general retail and restaurants. And while most sectors experienced losses, the losses weren't as high as we had anticipated and totaled roughly 7% overall. So next, I just want to touch on some of the factors that contributed to the sales tax results that were either not known or could not have been anticipated. First, we had the CARES Act stimulus, which provided an additional $600 a week in unemployment benefits, which helped people to purchase necessities like groceries, for example. Consumer activity was higher, with people exhibiting extreme behaviors by stocking up on items like toilet paper, hand sanitizer and cleaning products. These types of purchases ranged from a 207% increase in toilet paper sales to over 5,000% increase in hand sanitizer sales. Sales and home improvement and gardening increased significantly with more people at home due to the shelter-in-place orders. Consumers shifted to online sales from brick and mortar. Here in Walnut Creek, revenue from online sales increased 14% over fiscal year 19. Non-essential businesses adapted in order to continue operating. So for example, restaurants were selling market goods and hand sanitizer, also expanding their takeout options. Lastly, fewer businesses took advantage of the statewide sales tax payment deferrals and extensions that were available. So this resulted in higher receipts than we had anticipated in the last two months of fiscal year 20. This next table breaks down the cost savings by department. So again, on May 5th, we reduced the budget by $6.5 million, which was the amount of savings departments were expected to achieve through the last three months of fiscal year 20. Effective with the shelter-in-place order, city staff were directed to limit purchases to essential items only, and a hiring freeze was implemented. This resulted in the necessary decreased stoppage or shift to a new delivery method for city services and operations. So as a result of the hard work by city staff, we saved an additional $0.5 million. So this table shows the same savings by budget balancing strategy categories that we had adopted back on May 5th. So you can see that we achieved savings, the savings we had anticipated in each category, with the increase being in the restricted essential purchases. So with things like suspending travel and training and then for facilities maintenance, really responding only to those essential needs. That is what allowed us to save that additional $0.5 million at year end. So I wanted to briefly revisit our reserve balances. So we did not require the use of the authorized reserves in fiscal year 20 as a result of the increased revenues we had received. So this chart, which you've seen before, shows where we were with our reserve balances back on March 31st, which was $21.2 million in our non-pension reserves. Then council authorized the use of $3.6 million in fiscal year 20 to balance the budget. And then we have budgeted use of reserves for fiscal year 21 of $2.5 million. And then we have budgeted use of reserves for fiscal year 21 of $2.5 million. So without the use of fiscal year 2020, we now are showing our balance July 1, 2020, is approximately $18.7 million. So as you can see, we did not need to use the $3.6. That $18.7 does take into account what we are planning on using in fiscal year 21. So we have remaining 23.6% of our general fund expenditure budget in reserves. So in summary, the fiscal year 20 year-end results in the general fund shows a $2.5 million contribution to fund balance due to higher-than-anticipated sales tax revenue, increase in other city revenues, and the additional decrease in expenditures. However, there's continued uncertainty for fiscal year 21. So we have unknown impacts of a third coronavirus wave and what the vaccine availability will be for the general public. Will there be an additional federal stimulus? We're still waiting to hear about that. And then the overall speed of the economic recovery as counties are forced to increase restrictions as COVID cases rise. Next, I want to touch briefly on our two enterprise funds, Parking and Boundary Oak Golf Course. So the Parking Fund ended fiscal year 20 with higher-than-anticipated revenues and lower expenditures from where they were projected in May. Although the fund did not actively collect revenue for the last three months of the fiscal year, the higher revenue negated the need to use reserves to balance the fiscal year 20 budget, and they were authorized to use up to $200,000. So the year-end contribution to fund balance in this fund is approximately $270,000. As soon as the county health orders allowed the course to reopen, city staff and Coursego staff worked to modify operations and comply with safety guidelines. As a result, the revenue came in higher than originally projected. And additionally, staff proactively managed expenses, and as a result, the fund ended the year with a contribution to fund balance of $310,000. Next, I'm going to go over the comprehensive annual financial report. So what I'd like to try to do is tie this into our fiscal year 20 results as well, and identify where you can find that information. And so admittedly, there's a lot of information in the CAFER. And I wanted to point out some of the areas that I look to when I'm going through a city's CAFER. So initially, the independent auditor's report is where you'll find the auditor's opinion on whether the city has fairly stated its financial statements in conformity with the generally accepted accounting principles, and whether or not the auditor has concern regarding internal controls. So this is key portion of this report. The transmitted letter provides you with a general overview of the city over the past fiscal year, fiscal year 2020 initiatives and projects that were accomplished, and the overall economic outlook for the city. The management's discussion and analysis is the best place to look for for an overall summary of the city's financial results. Compared to the last fiscal year, it provides financial highlights and variance analysis so that you can see the significant data in abbreviated form and the explanations for the changes year over year. If you want to dig deeper into the numbers, the financial statements and the required supplementary information can provide you with good information on the statement of net position, the notes to the basic financial statements, and the budgetary information. So we ended the fiscal year. So I'm going to talk about how we ended the fiscal year and what some of the major financial highlights were for the CAFER. So the auditors have concluded that the city's financial statements for fiscal year 1920 are fairly stated in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. This is commonly known as an unmodified or clean opinion and is the most favorable opinion that you can receive. So I want to touch briefly on the statements in the financial section and the components. So I'm going to focus on government-wide statements for the purposes of this discussion. And these statements reflect what the name implies essentially is all of the city's finances. And so this is broken into two categories, governmental activities and business-type activities. So governmental activities is things that you're familiar with, like the general fund, special revenue funds, internal service funds, and really, it's everything excluding business-type activities. Our business-type activities are where we charge customers directly for services like parking and Boundary Oak Golf Course. And so I wanted to mention this because the governmental activities is 94% of these financial statements, and so I'm going to focus on the results just for that category. So during the year, the city's net position in governmental activities decreased by $3.5 million from $272.7 million to $269.2 million. This represents a change of only 1.3% and is not viewed as significant, particularly in a year where an unprecedented pandemic began. And so our assets in our statement of net position, which for people who are excited to read about that is on page 33, our assets increased over fiscal year 19 by $6 million. Our liabilities also increased by $9.6 million over fiscal year 19, primarily due to an increase in our pension liability, and that came about from actuarial assumption changes. The changes to deferred inflows and outflows had a minimal impact on that position since they both decreased by roughly the same amount. So then when you look at our statement of activities on pages 34 and 35, you'll see that revenues were $105.5 million, which is a decrease from fiscal year 19 due to the inability to provide programs and services as a result of the pandemic. Our expenses and transfers were $109 million, which is a decrease again over fiscal year 19, and that was due to spending restrictions related to the pandemic. So this next slide shows the total fund balance in the general fund of $63.6 million, and it's broken into the fund classifications, which are listed from the most constrained to the least. And so the non-spendable fund balance of $600,000 is what it sounds like. It includes amounts that cannot be spent because they're either not in spendable form or they're required to be to maintain intact. Examples are inventory and prepaid items. The restricted fund balance are those items that are constrained by external entities or by law. So grantors, other governments, and the majority of the $21.8 million balance is our Section 115 Pension Trust. Our committed fund balance are restricted by the council at the highest level of decision-making authority. And so the $19.5 million is made up primarily of the city reserves, which were put in place by council resolution. The main difference between our committed and assigned is that the assigned portion of the fund balance can be constrained at a lower level than the council's highest authority. So for example, the finance committee or city manager could designate what those amounts are for. And this $15.9 million balance is made up primarily of capital projects. Our unassigned fund balance is a residual classification for the general fund, and this is where you're going to see the unassigned fund balance that I discussed earlier in the presentation. And so you can see that the $5.8 million of unassigned fund balance consists of things like the city manager's contingency, council contingency, and carryovers. And then you can see at the bottom there, the unassigned fund balance of $2.6 million. And more detail on this chart can be seen on page 108 in the CAFER document. And so that's where you're going to see where our year-end results that we just talked about are reflected in the CAFER. So what we're asking of you this evening is to move to accept both reports, the fiscal year 2020 year-end results and the comprehensive annual financial report and compliance reports for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. And that concludes the presentation, and we have staff available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. So this is what the finance committee had reviewed last week, and if we have any questions. And actually, Kirsten, if we could take this off-screen share, it'll allow me to be able to see the questions come from council easier. And I see already councilmember Silva has a question.
Yes, but I might have to ask her to go back.
Oh, of course.
So, but I'll ask my question. What I noticed is that the unassigned fund balance or the unspent monies, it was $2.5 million from actual operating results. But how did it get the extra $100,000? And I noticed that, where did that extra $100,000 come from?
So that was existing fund balance that was basically reclassified. So it just moved from one bucket to another. So in things like prepaid items, as we go throughout the year, these balances are as of the end of the fiscal year. And so as we go through the year, things get reclassified depending on the different activities that are occurring. So that was something that was existing and was reclassified, and now is falling into the bucket of unassigned fund balance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from councilmembers? Seeing none. Let's see if we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this. Susie, do we see anybody?
I don't see any hands raised for this item.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to council for any final comments from any council members. And Luella.
Yeah, I want to congratulate the people who put this all together, Kirsten and Katie and the whole team. You're right, you got the highest grade, and I'm going to tell you that I truly appreciated reading your report. Because as I was reading the report, I would mentally come up with a question, and just as I came up with a question, the answer almost magically appeared in the next sentence. And so I would say that that was among the best of financial reports that I have ever had the privilege of reading. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and thank you very much. And it is nicer to talk about this when, at the end, we're not frantically trying to patch a hole, but the hole is nicely patched with the examples of how we worked hard to adapt to an unadaptable situation. So thank you very much, all of you, for your efforts.
Any other comments? Councilmember Darling.
I just wanted to say thanks to all of you guys who worked on the FY '20 budget so that you oversaved a little bit, so it's not so painful for me as a new person coming in. I think you guys did a good job in a weird time, so thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Silva.
Having been a member of the finance committee, I really want to thank staff for all of the work first to develop, to really manage that budget process and those amendments last spring. Crashing and burning with 105 days is very, very difficult to manage, and you did a wonderful job. And then I also want to commend all of the organization for coming up with so many creative ways to try to save money, looking under every rock possible and try to figure out how we could survive this. We have a little bit of unspent monies that we will be trying to figure out what to do with, but I also know that we're still not sure what this next year really looks like. It feels like we're halfway through the year, but we don't get real results for a long time. And then when you wander around downtown, which is the height of our sales tax generating system, and you wander around over the last couple of days, which I have been doing, it's, I don't know, hopefully, they're buying bigger items that are in those bags that are a lot more expensive than paper towels. So anyway, thank you very much.
And I'll echo those comments. We were flying the plane at 40,000 feet and a wing fell off and two engines. And we were able to keep that plane going. And one of the first things that we heard was our city manager, Dan Buxley, who stated, "All we know is that we'll be wrong in our estimations." And we used the strong reserves that we had to make the best estimations possible. And thankfully, we did have those strong reserves because, as it turns out, we could allocate funding from them, and then we didn't even have to use all of that. So just great estimation on here, really helped to provide us with the steady hand and being able to continue down the path of at least fiscal sustainability. And as Cindy just mentioned, we don't know what the future holds. What we do know is that the holiday period is the time that most restaurants and retail make about half their money for the year, which means that we make a lot of our sales tax money in the in the six to eight weeks, and we don't know what the future is going to hold on that. So really great work on this, being a member of the finance committee for the last couple of years. It was difficult to go through this, but I'm really glad we did. And I think that we can all cross our fingers that 2021 brings a much better anticipation once we get into the following fiscal year. So again, thank you so much. And with that, I would like councilmember Silva to make the motion as being a member of the finance committee.
I thought I saw Mayor Pro Tem go like that.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I'm looking for hands on the raising hands, but I didn't see anything else. Matt, did you have something?
Thank you, Cindy. I did, and it was just, now it's turned into a question, actually. On the, I was impressed, the sales tax numbers came up higher than anticipated, and a large portion of that seemed to be due to the transportation sector and auto sales. And I'm wondering, Kirsten or Dan, if you have your crystal ball and can envision, do you foresee that that trend will continue through at least the end of this fiscal year?
Brave looks.
Go ahead there, Kirsten, if you want to start, and I can add if you'd like.
I was going to say, my crystal ball is rather muddy, but you know, I think that part of it was driven by people changing the way they're doing things and using, and no longer flying and doing the things that they couldn't do before. So in terms of where that trend is heading, I unfortunately don't have a good answer for you. I don't know, Dan, if you wanted to add anything to that.
No, I'll just pretend like I know what's going to happen, though, so I don't have any better idea. But the only thing I would add to that is there was a lot of binge purchasing, if you will, of vehicles, particularly used vehicles, as a lot of people were no longer taking public transit and they had a need for vehicles. So you know, I don't know how long that trend may continue. It could certainly continue for a few more months, but I also know that there was a period of time when a lot of the automobile plants were unable to manufacture due to COVID restrictions, and therefore, supply of new vehicles was constrained. And so I'm not exactly clear on the status of the automotive supply chain and if it's caught up yet or not. So if the demand is still stronger and the supply chain is not caught up, sales may not be as strong because the supply simply wouldn't be there. But I think that most of the automotive factories are back up and running, if not all of them. So if they're not caught up by now, they should be. But hard to say, you know, when this levels out, I would just add as well, not only automotive, but we're still seeing a lot of erratic buying behavior. As we've probably all read, you know, paper towel and toilet paper are at a premium right now, and people are binge buying hand sanitizer, still, you know, up thousands of percent compared to norm. And there's other types of erratic behavior as well, so it is a little hard to predict at this point in time.
Good. I appreciate that, and that's an honest answer. I think none of us know the true answer, but that was a nice surprise, I thought, from these numbers. And then I just wanted to thank Kirsten and Katie again, as usual. These reports, you really do a masterful job taking a very complex issue and making it very digestible and easy to understand, so it's appreciated, let me tell you. And I want to thank, as my fellow councilmembers did, all of staff for the increased efforts resulting in that $500,000 in additional savings. It's very much appreciated.
All right, thank you, Matt. And with that, councilmember Silva, would you like to make a motion?
I move to receive the fiscal year 2020 year-end results and accept the fiscal year 2020 audited financial statements and compliance reports.
And I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Can you please call the votes, Susie?
Councilmember Silva. Mayor Wilk.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskew.
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Right, and that brings us to the next item for consideration, which is the fiscal year 2021 first quarter budget update. And I forget of the staff presentation on that.
Good evening, Mayor Wilk and councilmembers, and Katie Bruner, the budget manager.
Good evening, Mayor Wilk and councilmembers, and Katie Bruner, the Budget Manager. And I do not have the ability to share my, oh, here we go. Now I can share my screen. And I will be presenting our first quarter budget update for fiscal year 2021 this evening. So today I'll be providing an update on the current status of our fiscal year 21 budget assumptions, review our results for the first quarter of fiscal year 21, and then share where we are going with the next steps and future updates. So the fiscal year 21, we developed the following budget assumptions. Is that schools would reopen in person this fall. Continued social distancing would be a fact of life for the near future. We would have no state or federal support. There would be no COVID-19 medical breakthrough like a vaccine. And the economic recovery from the recession would be a prolonged recovery. Where we are today, we know schools have not resumed, started out in distance learning this fall. And I can speak from personal experience. We have no, no, no plans at this point to reopen that we're aware of. The, there has been positive news on the vaccine front of a medical breakthrough with vaccine distribution just beginning this week. So that's encouraging. With regards to the health order restrictions, when we were in budget development, we were assuming that in the beginning of the fiscal year in July, that we would were the end of phase two, beginning of phase three, which would be the begin indoor retail open, personal services like salons and barber shops being open, and indoor dining, bars and gyms beginning to reopen with some restrictions. Then in August, the state shifted to the color-coded reopening model that we are now so familiar with. We started out in purple in August, moved to loosening restrictions through September and October. And since mid-November, we've been back into the purple tier with additional restrictions, almost at the most restrictive level since March, with most non-essential services closed through at least January 4. And so with these factors, we have a lot of continued uncertainty for the remainder of the fiscal year and even for our planning beyond. We don't know what the rising cases of COVID, what the, what the long-term impact will be, with the economic impact. Unemployment remains higher than pre-pandemic levels. We know that there were some federal stimulus such as additional unemployment benefits that are set to expire at the end of the calendar year, that we just have to wait and see what, what developments, what additional developments will happen and see how they impact our city revenues, plus how long these additional restrictions will continue and what operations will be allowed to resume and when. So due to the uncertainty and constantly changing information, we're continuing as staff to monitor our key indicators and to make adjustments as necessary. With that being said, our first quarter results, these are figures as of September 30, 2020. So overall, we received 12% of our budgeted revenues and expended 24% of our budgeted expenses and transfers out at the end of September. With regards to our general fund revenue, sales tax and property tax, because of how the sources are paid, we do not have enough revenue, even at this point in time, and especially at the end of the first quarter, to conduct meaningful analysis of our budget versus actuals. Sales tax comprises 29% of our budgeted revenue. And we will receive our first quarter results, actually later this week with our sales tax consultant. And so then we will, and the big question there is not only what were our numbers, but how are the trends continuing compared to the previous quarter? Are they one-time trends or are they, you know, for the longer term, short term? And those are the things that we'll continue to monitor. Our property tax is 34% of our budgeted revenue and we don't receive our first major installment until December of 2020. And then our department revenues comprise 27% of our budgeted revenues. At the end of the first quarter, we had 30% of our budgeted revenue received. And this included our business license renewals, charges for permits and inspections, and fees for classes. So at the bottom line on our revenues, we will have a better picture of our fiscal year 21 revenues at our second quarter update. Our general fund expenditures, overall operating expenditures are about 23% of budget at the end of September. Most department expenses were under 25% of their budget, with the exception of general government. And they are at 43% of their budgeted expenditures at the end of the first quarter due to the payment of annual insurance premiums. Throughout the first quarter and even, and now departments are continuing to respond and adjust to pandemic-related activities, whether that's through adjusting city facilities, creating new virtual or outdoor programs, or supporting businesses through the rebound program. So as you may recall, when we adopted the fiscal year 21 budget, we, the adopted budget included the elimination of 19.25 full-time equivalent employees. In August, three employee units agreed to voluntary furloughs, which led to the restoration of 3.75 FTEs. And then additionally, five and a half FTEs were placed on extended furlough due to health order restrictions. So overall, for part of balancing the fiscal year 21 budget, 10 FTEs were ultimately eliminated. I'm going to touch briefly on our enterprise funds. So first, our downtown parking and enhancement fund. So revenue collected in the parking fund is about 9% of budgeted revenue at the end of the first quarter. And this was revenue collected for less than 500 parking meters and related enforcement. The budget assumed charging for parking at garages and purple poles would be phased in over the first quarter of fiscal year 21. Parking at the garages resumed charging in mid-November and the purple poles will be phased in at a later date. So in light of the lower revenue in the first quarter, expenditures are being monitored closely. And if we, if budget adjustments are necessary, they'll be brought forward at a future budget update as we have additional information. And with regards to Boundary Oak Golf Course, the golf course has received about 36% of budgeted revenues and spent about 33% of expenses at the end of the first quarter. Summer demand for golf was higher than anticipated, even with county health order restrictions. And at this time, golf course, golf course revenues and expenditures are projected to be in line with budget. So while uncertainty remains in fiscal year 21 and we have to balance the bad news with the hopeful news in the future, revenues and expenditures for the first, first quarter have occurred largely as expected. We're continuing to monitor revenues, expenses, economic trends, and our health order restrictions. And we will return to Finance Committee and City Council with the second quarter budget update in early 2021. So this evening, we are requesting that you receive the report and the presentation. We are not recommending any adjustments to the budget at this point in time. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have any questions? I see Mayor Protem Francois's hand went up quickly.
Did. I didn't want to be left out. Thank you. And thank you for the report, Katie. The one that caught my eye and caused me a little concern was the parking fund. And I know it is probably a timing issue here, but can you remind me, when did we start charging again on the green poles?
I I don't remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
I guess the question is, was that, that revenue, what you're capturing in these numbers is July, August, and September mostly?
Yes, correct.
If we were charging for the green poles, it was only at the tail end of that period?
I believe we started in July, charging for parking at the green pole. And there is, this is a point in time of September 30, so there is occasionally with credit card, there is a delay in some of the reporting. So there might, some of the first quarter revenue might actually be reported in our second quarter, quarter revenues as well.
But during that period of time, then, while we were charging for the green poles, we were not charging for the purple poles and we were not charging for, in the city garages?
Correct.
And as a percentage of parking spaces, don't, don't we have something like 3,000 spaces downtown? What is, what did the green spaces represent of that?
So I know.
More of a question for Carla, I realize, but I'm just trying to get a sense of scale for.
So the number of parking spaces we were charging for during the first quarter was less than 500? And that's what that revenue reflects?
Roughly speaking, councilmember Mayor Protem Francois, and I'll defer to Carla, she's hopping on here in just a moment, is we have about 3,000 spaces, about 1,500 are in the garages and about 1,500 are in meters, if I recall correctly, but I don't recall the exact breakout between the green poles versus the purple poles. And as you're aware, we did only start charging for garages just about a month ago. Welcome, Carla.
Hey, Carla.
How are you? Good to see everybody.
You are Johnny on the spot. Thank you. Anything to add in terms of strategies or thoughts in terms of the parking revenue and expenditures and how we can keep a good handle on that?
Yeah, you know, I missed a little bit of what the city manager said as I was getting brought into the meeting. But as we're, as we're seeing lower revenues, which we expected, we are also watching our expenditures very closely. The beauty of parking is if there are less people parking, it also costs less to run the program. It costs less per transaction. So we are seeing lower revenues because there's less people parking and a majority of our metered spaces are not not being charged up. So we're going to continue to monitor this. I think Budget Manager did say this is through September 30. As you all know, we did start charging in the garages in mid-November. So we're expecting that, you know, quarter two will look a little bit better. We did see steady increases in demand through as the, as as the tiers progressed and things started to open. So as we get back to that, parking demand goes up. So I think we're optimistic, but cautiously optimistic. And yeah, we're watching our expenditures pretty closely.
Carla, I think the part you missed was Dan was saying that, you know, we've got 1,500 spaces in the garages and 1,500 spaces at the meters. Is it accurate that 500 of those meter spaces are the green poles and the other 1,000 are the purple?
That is correct, yes.
So when, what is staff's view in terms of when it would be reasonable to start, resume charging for, at the purple pole? What do you think the trigger date is?
You know, it really, it's, it's going to depend. I would say as we are starting to come out of this deep purple, I think we take a look at it. But at this point, it would be into 2021, into spring.
Let me just add to that, if I could briefly, that the measure that we've been largely using to try to determine when to park for parking is based upon the utilization rate. And, you know, how well used, how much are these spaces being used? And part of the rationale for charging for the green meters in the core area back in July was that the spaces were being used. And we actually heard from some businesses, believe it or not, that asked the city to charge for parking because they weren't turning over at the frequency that they would prefer. And there were people parking all day in places in front of businesses. So that's the type of, so quantitatively, we're looking at what's the utilization? And when they're overutilized and people can't find spots, it's when we, we would start to charge more because people would be less apt to use them or they'd turn over more frequently. And then anecdotally, what we're hearing. And then the other thing I wanted to add, and Carla likely has more details, is I just do want to point out that, you know, there is an economic contribution by the city to the rebound program by way of the lost revenue of the parking spaces that are being allocated towards tents or other structures that are being put up by the businesses to support outdoor dining when that was in place. And even now, we're not charging for those exact spots for meters. We're allowing them to be used to better enhance pickup and delivery from those businesses. And if I recall correctly, the cost of not charging for, where quite a few meters is, you know, in the hundreds, a couple hundred thousand dollar range. So it's not, it's not chump change, if you will. So I just want to point that out that in terms of, you know, in addition to many other activities the city has been doing to try to encourage economic activity, that is an actual hard cost to that, that program.
To that point, Dan, how many spaces are being taken up by the rebound program?
I'm going to defer to Carla on that one.
We had assumed about 125 spaces would be taken up in the budget. I believe we are above that number. I think we're closer to 140.
Thank you. Luella, I saw your hand up before. Do you have, was your question answered? Okay, go for it.
So when we were going through the account for the item before, you reported that one of the reasons the, the sales tax was higher was because people paid it and didn't defer it to, I think it was September, when they would defer the, the, the thing, defer their payments into the sales tax system. Did you make any, having collected it more currently before June end, did, did, did you make an adjustment in the budget for money that we thought was going to come in later than sooner? Did you understand the question?
I believe so. Yes, we did not do any adjustments in the fiscal year 21 in anticipation of any delayed revenue being received in the, in 21 versus 20. So it didn't impact how we budgeted our 21 revenue for sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, can I get clarification on the last one? Does that mean that we recognized the revenues from 20, fiscal year 2020 in 2020, even if they were deferred payments?
Very few businesses took advantage of the deferred payment. So we did, we did receive those revenues in the last two months of fiscal year 20, even though it was expected or hoped maybe that people would take advantage of those deferrals, but very few businesses did, so.
Thank you.
Do we have any more council member questions? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make any, that have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I don't see any hands raised for a public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council then for any further comments by any council members. Cindy Silva has both hands up.
It's because I forgot a question that I had written down. You said that we would have the results at the, okay, so we're really looking at the results of the first quarter, which ends, ended September 30, and it is mid-December. So that's a two and a half months. So can we assume that the second quarter, which will end December 31, will be reported to us somewhere around mid-March?
Yes, we are originally targeting, targeting end of February, beginning of March for our second quarter update.
And that would include the holidays?
Our holiday sales tax information, we won't receive as staff until about mid-March due to the lag in reporting.
Okay, but that's, the holidays are in the second quarter. That's why I really asked the question. Here we have this volume of sales activity and it is occurring. Hopefully, everybody runs out after tonight and goes really feverishly shopping for something more than paper towels and toilet paper. But we're not going to see that as quickly. Okay, so we have to be mindful of that. Thank you. And my comment would be, thank you very, very much. I know it's hard to, you know, keep track of all this. And I too am concerned about the parking fund. But it's a direct reflection of the local economy as well.
Any other comments by council members? Seeing none, I, the comment I'll make is that, again, thank you so much for the work you've done on this. Obviously, there is a lot more data that we're going to need. Obviously, there is a lot more data that we're going to need that will, I'm sure, be looking at the next quarter's budget update with key anticipation. But it makes sense to go on the path that we're that we're doing right now until there's a more predictable fiscal path. And hopefully, getting into the first couple of months of 2021, we'll start to see that eventuality. Till then, I do think it makes sense that we're on. So with that, I'll undertake a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move to approve the acceptance of the report for the first quarter of fiscal year 21 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Suzie, please call for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskew.
Hi.
And Mayor Wilk.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Which brings us to our final consideration item. Before we go there, I would like to ask for a five-minute bio break, just five minutes, so we can devote our full energy onto this last item then. So it is now 9/11. Let's call this back at 9:16. Okay, we have our final consideration item for the evening, and that's the potential for the restaurant grant program. If we could see the staff report on that, it looks like Terry is all keyed up.
I am. Thank you, Mayor Wilk. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Terry Kilgore, Assistant City Manager. I have Colette Hannah here with me this evening, our Economic Development Manager also. I have some slides that I'm hoping will come up soon. But this evening, we're excited to talk to you about a potential restaurant grant program. During these comments, I I hope that it will be clear that we understand many industries are impacted by the current COVID economic crisis. And we understand that that it's not just restaurants, but we do know that restaurants have been especially hard hit, and we'll talk about that more in a minute. Next slide. So this evening, we are before the council asking for direction on a potential grant program. You'll find it's very loosely defined as this item came forward mid-last week. So we really are looking for input on what direction the council would like to go. Any criteria that you'd like us to consider as we draft a program? Next slide, please. So some of the ways that restaurants have been uniquely impacted is that there have been either prohibitions or limitations on how restaurants can operate since the beginning of this crisis. Other industries have been allowed to come back into the office or come back into their retail spaces, where restaurants have been very constrained in how they've been allowed to operate, whether it's takeout and delivery only or outdoor dining or indoor dining at at very limited capacities and always having to maintain social distancing, even regardless of capacity allowances. The biggest change is just happened recently. We're back to where we're back at pickup and delivery only. You know, we had been hoping by this point, you just heard the financial update. We'd been hoping we would be well into indoor dining, that we would be moving out of our parking spot dining, if you will, and well on our way to normalcy. But that's obviously not the case of where we are in today's pandemic counts. So as context for you, there's just over 200 restaurants in Walnut Creek. That number needs some refinement. That includes all kinds of different establishments. We do not this evening have data for you on the size of restaurants, how many are chains, some of the the useful information that I we would suggest we might want to consider as we further develop a program. But know that any number in any grant program we come up with sort of our ultimate universe is around 200 restaurants. Next slide, please. So on December 9th, the Ad-Hoc Committee suggested that this item be brought to the council for consideration. There were a there was a program discussed. Since then, staff has researched some additional programs. Those were included in an addendum to the council this evening. But what I wanted to highlight for you, and the reason I think this discussion is important, is that there's many ways to structure a program. You know, there's many formats that this could take. But at the end of the day, the best program is where the process and the form of the program focuses on how we achieve the goal that we set for ourselves. So really, what is our intention here? You know, and and understanding who we're trying to help. We know we have dollars we could potentially put towards this. But who are we going to assist with those monies? Because in practical reality, we can't help every business. We don't have unlimited funds. And so how do we target those most effectively to bring the biggest impact? Next slide, please. So in our search for information on other locale, excuse me, local agencies and what they've done, what we found is many cities have jumped into this mix, but many of their programs are very different from one another. The total program allocations run anywhere from a quarter million to a million dollars in terms of what city councils have been willing to spend. The grants themselves vary. It says 5K. We've seen some that are even smaller than that, really micro grants. Some are larger, up to $10,000. Some cities have focused only on restaurants. Some have included retail personal services and even industrial. So it really has varied widely as from our research in terms of what cities have chosen to target in these grant programs. Next slide, please. So we have three main questions for the council. Next slide, please. And that's a lovely shot of our outdoor dining. I will say our restaurants have done an excellent job of being creative with their spaces and trying to create welcoming environments for our customers. So the first question is the big one, is is the council interested in pursuing a restaurant grant program? Is there is there sufficient momentum behind this idea? And I think we'll talk more about that in a minute. Next slide. And if you are interested, what parameters, criteria, ideas would you like us to provide either additional information on or to consider in the program development? You know, there are different forms that, as I discussed, some cities have gone with a lottery-style approach. Some have done first come, first served. Some have made it a competitive process. Some have excluded chains or limited it to certain number of employees per business that are eligible. So there's many different ways this could be structured. Again, back to the point of what's our intention with this program? And then how do we find those criteria that help us get to that end goal? Next slide, please. And then the big money question is how much money is the council open to allocating to this program? As we heard earlier, we're not out of the woods with this pandemic and its impact on our revenues as a city and not done with us on their impact on parking and other programs that may need additional financial support. So obviously, the council is quite adept at balancing the many needs that get put in front of you. And so we're looking for direction from you on how much or how big to make this program. Next slide, please. So if you're interested, you know, we will take direction this evening, try to put it together into a package, coming back to the council in January with a request to allocate funds. You know, at a minimum, we would anticipate the process would look like some sort of application from interested businesses, a review and selection process, and then obviously the distribution of monies. Given the logistics involved with that, we're really looking at the soonest monies could get out the door as being late February. Next slide, please. So with that, I will conclude my comments and we are available for any questions and happy to hear the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. All right, I'm sure we have lots of questions. So let's start off with Councilmember Silva.
Oh, actually, Councilmember Haskew and I have additional comments because this actually came from Councilmember Haskew and I as being the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Staff made a great presentation, but perhaps you will allow us to elaborate and explain our rationale.
Sure.
So I will start by saying that during the course of the six months that the Ad-Hoc Committee has been working with staff, on and off, we've had conversations about is there some kind of grant specific support that we can provide to local businesses? But we didn't have the money to do it. But we were hearing about them in Concord, in Benicia. So peer cities around us were doing it. They some of them were using CARES Act money. Some of them had other funds available to them. Now, granted, we had put in $160,000 of funds toward all of the work that we've been doing, working with our downtown businesses in particular and the rebound program. But this one area was one that we had not been able to even pursue at all. The need was there, but the funds were not. Then we start getting through the fall and the need looks less and less likely. But the funds begin to be apparent that we have some unspent funds from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. But it didn't look like it was necessary. And then overnight, we went from being in the orange tier to being in the deep purple tier again. And in particular, the restaurants were hit significantly harder than a lot of the other businesses with this. And so we had a conversation last week at the December 9th rebound Ad-Hoc Committee meeting and really talking about, is there a competitive grant program that we could put in place? That is that uses the models of our peer cities locally to help us frame it? We don't have to reinvent the wheel? What can we pick and choose from it? What would we focus on? How much money would we do? But really, it was about providing a lifeline during this significant downturn, when so many of the businesses, actually restaurants included, actually make their big money this month as well, and yet they are constrained now. And of course, the weather constraints, even if they were outdoors, they were already going to be constrained. It was it's direct aid. It's not helping them find it someplace else because there is no other place. And it also really was about speed. There will be many ways to make it perfect, but every day we are losing one of these businesses. And how fast can we can we get money in their hands by mid to late February if we can put a competitive process in place? So I'll hand it off to Luella. Maybe she can talk a little more about why we said restaurants versus the plethora of others who are struggling and what we were thinking financially.
My aim wasn't very good. And and it wasn't an easy discussion because it does seem like we picked out one sector. There is a reason for that settlement, partly because restaurants had to do so much more to invest before they could even adapt to the pop-up. I mean, they didn't they cost money. And and losing the staff and getting the staff all restructured. And we had just gotten into the place where we were talking about setting up the plans for meeting the requirements for the new winter requirements, considering possible rain. Oh, please, can we have some rain? And the other the other thing is is cold and and wind and and what do we do about about those and the changes? Just having an open air thing isn't going to make people want to come and sit in your sit in your area. And it became really very clear that we had to redefine what that was going to look like once they said there was no indoor seating at all, even outdoor now even outdoor is gone. But it was even more expensive for all the restaurants that were trying to adapt to the winter requirements as opposed to just, you know, the summer where you could just it was way more complicated than I'm going to make it sound. Stick up a fence and put a few tables out. And believe you me, it was way more complicated. And believe you me, it was way more complicated than that. So they are the ones that are not only most impacted with the drop in business, but they also were the ones that were impacted with the most outgoing expenses. Adding together, you can argue, you could argue this both ways, but adding together that the restaurants are in fact, one of our biggest draws to downtown. It is people come downtown to eat and walk up and down the streets and stop in stores. Or they choose our downtown to go shopping in because we have good, solid, strong restaurants. It's important that we keep that particular sector going. And there was one other thing I will, that jumped in my mind and jumped out again. And I will, I will pull it out pretty soon, but we're going to have to take a break for my mind to re, to resettle. So, yeah.
To Lawella, before you go on to the financial was that by and large, restaurants have the most labor intensive type of business. A retail establishment can be run with a lower number of people. But restaurants behind the scenes and back of kitchen and back of house, there is a significant number of employees involved. And so these restaurants have these jobs that are involved in it as well, and we are cognizant of that.
And so that wasn't my last idea, but it is on my list of things to talk about. And that is how much money do we need to consider? How much money do we think you, we should consider as the, the total sum from our budget? And our first number that we talked about was $250,000. That seemed like a lot of money until we figured out how many people would probably need it and what shape the money would be required. And then we jumped around for a while and we finally settled on as a starting point of $500,000. And that gives us some money to work with. If it turns out, and this is my own version, this isn't anything the committee discussed. If it turns out that this is successful and it really makes a difference, we may consider doing a phase two, which would look at a different, we will be further in our year. So we'll know if we have any potential funds that we could use for this as well as we could then open it up to maybe a second round of, of support for the businesses. I think I've covered everything.
Thank you. I saw Matt, did you have, did you have a question, Mayor Portem?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And I'd like, I think it's directed to the rebound committee. This is a really interesting discussion and I'm glad we're having it. I'm glad, thank you to the rebound committee for giving a lot of thought and bringing it forward and the staff as well. Just, just generally, what is the goal? You know, it's, it's whether it's 250 or 500, it's, it seems like a grant of, of five to 10,000. It's not going to provide a lot of payroll support, right, for an extended period of time. So what, overall, what is the thought of what we're trying to achieve through this program?
So each of us may have a different perspective, but I'll answer first. I'll call it a lifeline during this significantly difficult time. It could be that we, the parameters are that they may use it to deal with whatever financial issues they have, whether it's lease payments that they're behind on, that they're at risk of being evicted. It could be additional equipment that they need in order to get through this time. Because it could be for utilities payments. It could be for payroll. But I guess the goal, how we would know, it'll be hard to know whether it works if you're trying to figure out which ones would have closed. It's not like we're going to set up a test and go, okay, we're going to do this on two blocks and we'll see how many survive versus how many survive, don't survive on the two blocks we don't cover. That would be, you know, kind of the way you would test an environment or how you test a vaccine and see if it works. But we're really not proposing that. I think it is really trying to figure out how many we can keep going through this closed period so that they can come out of it and hang with us and keep the rest of the community, the rest of our economic sectors, allow them to survive as well.
I've got a question along those same lines.
I was, I want equal time here. There is, there is another thing, and it started with the, the estimate that the staff gave us about what it would cost the average restaurant to do the winter structures. And the amount was approximately $3,000. And we thought, oh, gosh, you'd have to, you'd have to spend the money for the front ones and then the back ones. And, and now you have to come up with another $3,000 to meet all the requirements for safety and for, and for good things to protect, protect your business and your assets. And so that kind of, in my mind, gave me a start of that if, if the business is willing to go that far, maybe we should help them or could help them with the 5,000, the $3,000 with a little extra maybe. Then the other thing that struck me was we're investing, we're not only telling restaurants and businesses that we really want them here and we're willing to put our money where our mouth is. But if they've, if, if they survive, because they get this little boost of hope or burst of money, we have saved a business that will take us years to essentially rebuild again, that if we lose all our businesses because they just can't afford to go through this pandemic, we're going to lose sales tax for several years ourselves. And so maybe it was a little self-interest as to why we should continue to think about giving a little extra boost to the businesses that are working so hard to survive.
Thank you. I have a question that kind of piggybacks onto that. So we're talking about this emergency lifeline and something to help get them through the most critical couple of months they're going to have. But the timeframe, as Terry had mentioned, is looking at mid to late February, which could well be too late for some of these restaurants. Is there any way to expedite this? In any way, shape or form, it just seems like if we go through the normal processes, you know, some of these businesses won't survive that could, that could have used the money in the meantime to have survived.
So it depends on how hard we're willing to work.
Well.
Okay.
How hard we're willing to work?
Actually, it's not just a matter of how hard we're willing to work. It's a matter of how many, how much criteria you want to have. You know, if you want to just start cutting checks tomorrow to anybody, we can do that. But if you actually want to have some criteria and have people apply and have some vetting and to ensure that there's not fraud, then it's going to take some time to put this in place. So I want to emphasize it's not a matter of how hard people are willing to work.
Cindy Darling, do you have any questions?
I mean, I'm obviously been struggling with this since I came up with the idea and I, it is compelling. And I have, so as far as effectiveness, have we talked to some of the restaurateurs? You know, kind of the same question that Matt was asking. If you get 5,000, I mean, is that enough? Or 10,000? Do we have some idea like what percentage of gross monthly revenue this would replace?
No, we don't have great data on gross monthly revenue. What, and what we do know is we've been talking to businesses about how many really intend to further supplement their pop ups. That number's a little smaller than what we expected. But what we do know is all of them are, you know, dealing with rent. Part of the challenge they're facing is inventory with these start, stop closures and, you know, moves to takeout and delivery versus in, indoor dining. The hard part is it's not been uniform across restaurants, right? So we're hearing that people who do pizza takeout, some of them are doing their best year ever. Sit down dining establishments are getting crushed. So we don't have great data as part of the dilemma here, but we, we have talked to enough restaurateurs and talked with WCD in the chamber to know that everybody's feeling the pinch. I just don't think it's probably the same, exact same level of pinch for each restaurant.
And is it envisioned to be just for downtown restaurants? Or are we talking restaurants within city limits?
The ad hoc suggestion was downtown. Staff suggested broadening that to citywide restaurants. Just, you know, we, we felt like it was perhaps more inclusive because we have had restaurants outside of downtown participate in rebound and are dealing with the same kind of issues that businesses downtown are in some ways in terms of building out winter space and inventory challenges, et cetera. So that's definitely at the council's discretion.
You know, and Dan really hit the nail on the head. If you, a grant program costs as much and takes as long as the number of criteria that you put on it. Have you guys, I mean, it sounds like you don't have the resources in-house to put together a grant program. So do you have an idea of what it would cost to establish a simplified process, assuming just some basic due diligence?
Again, it goes back to how complex we make this. If it's pretty straightforward criteria and it's, everybody gets a certain amount regardless of, you know, an application process, I would expect those costs to be much lower. The challenge has been when we've talked to other cities, their programs are different enough than ours and their size is different enough. You know, I would take a wild guess of probably $10,000, maybe 15 to get it administered. But the more complex it is, the larger that number probably grows. If it's just cut a check to every business that we have in business license, we may be able to do that in-house.
And then.
Do this, because we may have more questions as well. But why don't we go to the public and see if the public has any questions or comments? Then we'll bring it back to council for other questions, comments or direction. So Suzie, do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this?
We do. I'll start bringing them in. First, we have Catherine Wally.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening again. It's Catherine Wally. I live in Walnut Creek and my pronouns are she/her. I apologize if this was already covered. I was, for some reason, Zoom kicked me off for about two or three minutes of your conversation. I'm really excited to hear about the possibility of this, this grant program. I know our businesses are struggling, particularly many of our small businesses, and how important it is to make sure that they have a lifeline through this really difficult period. So I know that with the implementation of the federal paycheck protection program, the PPP program, those loans, many small businesses, particularly those that were women and minority, primarily black owned, received disproportionately few PPP loans. So I'm in the implementation, implementation of this type of program that we'd be doing at Walnut Creek, which I know is much smaller scale. I'm just wanting to make sure that we can see if there's a way that we can figure out how to prevent sort of a similar disproportionate, disproportionate allocation of these types of funds to, to other businesses that might already be more well-resourced or have more access to, to resource funding. I don't know the legality of how these types of grant funds can be distributed, but I'm wondering if there's a way that we could prioritize supporting businesses that are most vulnerable due to systemic factors that disproportionately disadvantage certain segments of the population, including restaurants that might be women and/or minority owned. And if, at the very least, if such restaurants are not able to be prioritized, I'd ask that we could ensure that these types of businesses are not disadvantaged in terms of how the application and approval process takes place in terms of these grants. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Hemingway.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Hemingway. I'm the executive director of Walnut Creek Downtown. And I just wanted to, to speak on behalf of our downtown businesses and our restaurants and thank the council and staff for this consideration of the, of the grant program. As everyone has been speaking about for quite a while, many of our businesses are on the brink of permanent closures. Where we're seeing businesses that are operating with owners and, and a staff member or two to be able to serve their customers. I even had over the weekend, a business owner ask, or a restaurant owner, ask if he could set up a food cart in front of his restaurant because he had been visiting a, a neighboring city and saw a woman selling tamales and thought that she probably was making more money than he was at that day. So with the restaurants, they've been particularly hit hard with little relief in sight. And this massive impact of COVID-19 has, has hit their livelihoods incredibly so and impacting our restaurants, which we have about 130 in the downtown. And so the city's grant program would be extremely helpful to our small businesses so they can pay their staff and they can pay their rent and buy the supplies needed to operate their businesses. Walnut Creek Downtown's had a team working with city staff on additional options to winterize their outdoor spaces. But those will cost money, more money that they've had to spend already upfront in some, in the tens of thousands of dollars to create their pop up spaces, which have been making the outdoor dining experience comfortable and enjoyable for our guests. And many of our owners have secured those PPP loans and they've secured other loans, even loans that some are tied to their homes. And that, that type of forgiveness or, excuse me, that funding in the form of a forgivable loan or grant could make a positive difference for all of them. So it's important that, that the funds do reach our businesses as soon as possible to avoid more layoffs, business closures and the risk of losing businesses that are so extremely valuable to our downtown business community. So thank you so much for bringing this to your council tonight for consideration. We, as an association, are more than happy to assist with the program and we appreciate your time.
Kathy, before you leave, can I ask a question? What, and thank you for being here tonight and speaking to the issues that are happening downtown. What, what do you hear back from like personal services, salons, gyms, small retailers, lighthouse books or, you know, how are they dealing with the restrictions on indoor retail? How's it impacting their business?
No, the retailers and the spas in the wellness sector, they're all suffering, you know, just as much. They do have the smaller staffing, you know, as Councilmember Silva said, that, you know, they, they can operate maybe with one person or two people as far as a retailer. But they're still struggling and they have very limited hours. And operating now at 20% is, is difficult. And even our, you know, now our spas and wellness centers, salons, those are closed. So they're, they're struggling, you know, as well. It's, it's not good. It's not good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Brian Hirahara.
Good evening. Let's see, is my. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. First of all, I want to recognize all of you, including Terry and Collette's leadership, as well as Cindy and Lawella's. I'm a board member of Walnut Creek Downtown. I'm also on the retail restaurant rebound subcommittee, I guess. And it's been inspiring to see the various groups move mountains very quickly. I've seen such a proactive and flexible attitude from staff in the city that it's been very refreshing. And without that, I mean, a lot of the things that we see happening downtown would not be there. So I want to recognize that. That's one of the gifts of the pandemic is we're doing things that are, are really making a difference. You know, with the restaurant closures, there's been a lot of discussion, you know, when, when Prima Restaurant, which is one of the longest independent, longest standing independent restaurants, so many of us have had special occasion dinners there, closed. So many of us have had special occasion dinners there, uh, closed. Um, and we lost Scott's, which we have had so many lunches and celebrations in that courtyard. Um, and there's going to be more to come, no doubt. And to the point of the fact that whatever we do, it's going to be a drop in the bucket. Um, but I think anything will help. And I think in terms of just morale. Um, it's, as I think uh, LaWella mentioned, that the city is getting behind the restaurants and showing, it might have been Cindy, I'm sorry. But uh, just the commitment that we're showing. It's a very difficult time. We all know that the vaccine is finally here, but it's the dark winter that we've been fearing. So I think just the hope that something's coming. Um, also, um, I would encourage to consider the independent restaurants as opposed to the chains necessarily, just because I think they have less resources. And lastly, once spaces go vacant, you have to remember that um, a new restaurant will trigger a bunch of different requirements. From ADA to grease interceptors, et cetera, that may leave spaces off the market for many years to come. We have some already downtown. So it's not just the short term. It'll take a long time for those uh, spaces to be released. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Cindy did.
Cindy has a question?
I had a question for Brian. Oh, good, he got back. On the re-tenanting, since. Is it more difficult to re-tenant race, restaurant space than it is to re-tenant retail space?
Absolutely.
To compare it?
Yeah, and a restaurant, I don't want to, well, actually both Scott's and as well as Prima. You know, they've been restaurants for a long period of time. When a new tenant comes in, and we've had this happen in our buildings, then um, all the agencies um, have new requirements. So the new one, for instance, that's a big one is Central San, the sanitary district. Says, well, now you need a minimum thousand gallon, actually for Prima, it'd probably be fifteen hundred gallon inner grease interceptor. That can't go in the public right away. So then you got, actually the city just went through this in leasing the beer house space. You have to put interceptors in the garage and a lift uh, pump to get it up. And you know, into that neighborhood of um, hundred, could be hundreds of thousands of dollars plus new fees. Plus, and any restaurant will have to redo the space. Um, so the restaurants are a lot more complicated. And then you have uh, ADA access that gets triggered. So then you got to convert the restrooms and it just, it just kind of starts snowballing. So um, retail, you can pretty much, it's a lot simpler. You know, you make, move some demisey walls, make some changes. There's still complications, but especially on older restaurants. It's, it's, it's a, it's a big project to um, bring it up to, to new code.
So it'll just take longer to fill those spaces that have been restaurants?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a quick question, Brian, so hang on, yeah, go ahead. Is there a clear enough dividing line between an independent and a chain restaurant? That it will be easy enough for staff if we tell them, we only want to fund independents, that they can put a line out there that people will agree with?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I hate to cut out the, the chains. But they definitely have more resources in terms of marketing and other things that the independent restaurants just aren't going to have. And there's different ways you could skin the cat. You could say if over this many locations. Or it could be any number of ways you could, you could handle that uh, size of the space. You know, usually it's the smaller restaurants or the independents. You get over, you know, three thousand square feet. Um, uh, many of them are, are, are chains. Um, and again, I hate to exclude them, but I definitely think that the independent uh, restaurants are more challenged in these times. Because they don't have um, you know, the wherewithal to go into the, 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 the chains, uh, marketing and other advertising, et cetera.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next speaker.
Yeah, next, next speaker, Jason Yamazaki.
Hi, I'm actually with Sasa in Walnut Creek. Um, I'm the director of operations. I've been on and off with the company for nine years. Uh, first and foremost, thank you for your time and thank you for um, giving us the opportunity to discuss this. As far as a grant, as, as all the restaurants. Thank you for all your hard work as well. Thank you for um, everything that the city has been doing to assist us. And get us uh, through this difficult time and um. Uh, challenges that we have encountered. Um, but I just wanted to kind of share that, you know, any, any type of. Um, any type of money that could, or a grant that could come to any of the restaurants would be a significant help. I can tell you that just to purchase heaters alone, uh, for us, cost us almost six thousand dollars. And we had it for two weeks before we got shut down. Um, the propane that we have to uh, use for that can cost us anywhere from two hundred to four hundred dollars a week. Just to supply those. For, for us, the biggest cost that we are experiencing right now is the costs uh, associated with complying with all the Cal OSHA. Newly uh, released guidelines and mandates that require not just restaurants, but all businesses to uh, comply with. And have all these plans and, I mean, as far as sick pay, it's unlimited for all this staff that you have. That either get quarantined from all these uh, cases that are coming up, or I mean, actually get the virus. So there's a lot of costs that are associated with, uh, especially restaurants that. I mean, our revenues are down, but our costs are still going up and up and up every single day. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Um, next speaker is Tony Dudum.
There you go. Is that better?
All right.
Hello.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, how you guys doing? Uh, first of all, thank you very much. And it's been a terribly long evening and uh, night, day. And I appreciate everybody's help with everything. And there's a lot of obstacles to get through, um, in pertaining to the restaurants and uh, the situation, what's going on. I see it from both ways as a restaurant owner and also as a part of a owner within my family of uh, commercial buildings. And I wholeheartedly agree with what you guys are doing. I think it's a great idea to collaborate and work on this. I also agree with Brian and uh, Jason and their aspects and viewpoints of uh, what's going on. And how we can try and stop the bleeding of this craziness. Um, there is no doubt in my mind at all. Uh, I'm not at liberty to talk about it, but I know of several of the restaurants that are literally on the. On the brink and verge of closing down and just shutting their doors. Uh, for myself, at fifteen fifteen Restaurant, we are completely closed down right now. We tried the takeout route and um, just didn't work out. There was, was not enough volume and it was just a money pit. And I tried to get some work for my customer, or excuse me, for my workers, but there were no customers there. And I feel terribly for them, but uh, with that being said, there definitely has to be some type of a, of a conversation in depth. More with how much money it could be allocated from the city, who it goes to. And um, you know, the lottery pick, I do not agree with. That's my personal preference. I think it should definitely be a private restaurant as uh, Brian Hirahara was also suggesting. I think they, they simply just have more money, more marketing money, more uh, more volume in general. Um, to try and help out the independent restaurateurs is uh, going to be something very special. Uh, and they'll appreciate everything they can. Uh, the costs are not easy. They're not light. They're very expensive. Uh, we've built uh, structures and bought outdoor furniture and tents and plexiglass and on and on. And it's all now either taken down in storage or just no good anymore. So uh, we've been struggling for months and we appreciate everything you guys are doing. I don't know if there's a real answer, a real quick right answer. I think it needs to be discussed and uh, really, really dug into. Um, maybe one thing that the city can do is just to suggest it off the top of my head. Is that maybe down the road, when things do open up, we loosen the city restrictions in general to allow restaurants, if they want to. To maybe stay open later or to keep serving on the streets, to cater in different ways. To um, uh, extend different uh, policies that will be more favorable for them to try and generate more funds to pay for this. If they even survive through this stuff. But um, you know, I appreciate everything that you're doing. Twenty-five hundred dollars a restaurant, five thousand dollars a restaurant, although it does sound beautiful and exciting. Uh, most of those won't even pay for a week's worth of labor for, for most restaurants. But like I said, we're appreciative of everything you're doing and I thank you for your time and consideration for this matter.
Thank you, Tony.
Sure.
Okay, I don't see any more hands up, so let's bring it back to council. And if we have any further questions, comments, and direction at that point, Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Well, to staff, I guess, to Terry, who, you know, I reviewed the addendum, which was really helpful. Or to Colette, are any of these other programs restricted to restaurants only?
Um, yes, some are. I'm going to ask Colette to provide more uh, context because she's the one who did the research.
Yeah, so a lot of them started off as um, restaurants only. And then based on interest from the community, they did um, expand. But um, yeah, they generally started with restaurants and some with retail consideration as well.
Okay, that, that's helpful. And then in terms of depending on how we decide, you know, if we decide to go forward and what the criteria is. Now, who, how would the mechanics of that work? Who would decide it? And how would, you know, an application would be submitted and then would be vetted by the rebound committee and staff? Or what thought has been given in to, to try to streamline that?
I'll just add, I think that there are a couple of options there in terms of uh, what role council would like to have. Certainly, uh, if the rebound committee wanted to review the applications and make the recommendations. That's something that the council could authorize. If they instead wanted to have staff do that, that's something staff could do. Uh, so I think either is an option. I think those are some of the points that should be discussed in terms of what role the ad hoc committee. Or the full council would like to play in this process.
You're punting it back to us again.
Can, before you ask a next question, there are a number, I, I agree with the number of alternatives. But I think if we don't want this to become a political hot potato for us and also want more speed. Designating it to independent reviewers is um, probably an option to consider. Independent reviewers, as in staff being more independent than councils. Councils can sometimes be.
Well, yeah, I know that point, then how is it done in other cities? How, how does Danville do it or?
Well, I had a conversation with the person who wrote the program in Benicia, who lives locally, and some of us know her. It was Karen Majors. And they have a staff group and one, I think consultant that goes through and basically. The criteria are established and a scoring mechanism, and then they scored them and they awarded the grants accordingly. And so their um, application was two weeks for people to submit the application. Once they really, they did two rounds of funding. Two weeks, then it was two weeks to um, review and select. And then it was two weeks to go through the process of cutting the checks. And it took some time to write the program, but they were, they were writing the program in Benicia back last June and early July. One advantage of having waited, I guess, is that we have others that we can copy from.
Well, and then the, the source of the, the source of the funds is general, the general fund. We, it's not, we're not, the CARES Act funding, we've already allocated. The amount we got from the federal government, that's already been allocated for, for homeless issues and, and related services, right?
Yeah, the CARES Act money was a reimbursement basis and has been allocated already for costs we've already incurred. So um, this, the discussion was about utilizing some of the um, unspent monies from fiscal year twenty that you just heard about. Um, the alternative there is council could also um, choose to use reserves uh, as an alternative. But it's all essentially general fund money. And then to your prior question, council member, I was just going to say, um, you know, I, I would look to Colette to tell us if she knows what Danville did. But I know some of the other cities we've looked at um, did have selection committees. Um, some used staff panels. It was kind of a, a mixed bag of, and then some were just straightforward programs that didn't require. It was first come, first served. So if you got your application in, you, you were just the, the winner of the, of the money. Is that right, Colette?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, based on the way that the program was structured. Um, if they submitted the, the financial documents and again, first come, first served, as Terry mentioned. Um, some of the other kind of basic requirements to show um, that you were in good standing with the city. Um, that you have a physical location, just kind of some basic vetting. Um, then it was able to be administered pretty much by the um, city staff. Or I'm sorry, approved by city staff, I should say.
Okay.
So Terry, in the staff report, you provided three questions that you really wanted direction on. And while we may not be able to handle all the directional, three of them, maybe we could take these one at a time. I think the first one was, is this something that we even want to be entertaining? We can at least move forward on that and then we start to tackle at that point.
Yes, that would be fabulous.
So what is the general tenor of the council? Do we want to go down this road of entertaining this potential grant?
I mean, I've been looking at this for the last couple of days and I think there is significant challenges facing the restaurants. And as long as we would reserve the opportunity to look at other businesses, as Terry mentioned afterwards. I'd be willing to go down this road with the restaurants now.
Okay. Um, council member Sylvan Haskew, I, I take it you're part of the committee that, that recommended this in the first place. So I assume that you are for moving forward on it.
So I'll make number two.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, I'm irrelevant at this point, but um, I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned about restricting it just to restaurants. It, it doesn't seem like any of the other cities have done that. I do think there are some other businesses in our community that, I, I absolutely agree that restaurants are uniquely suffering in this. And have um, more so than a lot of other businesses. But I think there are other similarly situated businesses like gyms and personal services and salons that are also suffering. And I also think just generally retail, retailers are suffering right now, other than the ones that are selling toilet paper and Clorox wipes. But um, and I'm just trying to balance that all. I, I don't want to hold this up. I think that if this were to go forward with restaurants, I'm also sensitive to what uh, Mr. Dudum said. That his business is completely shut down right now and it's, he's not going to reopen, I would think, until outdoor dining is allowed again. And um, that's sad and that, that's, there's an immediate need, I think, maybe for the restaurants right now. Through this Christmas period, holiday season period, and then maybe in January or February. We could open it up to, more broadly to, to other retailers is what I'd like to see. But um, yeah, so I'm interested in pursuing a grant program. I guess I'm a little divided on whether it should just be restricted to restaurants.
And I, I'm also in favor of uh, proceeding with the potential of a grant program. I think it uh, made a lot of sense what council members Sylvan Haskew both had said, that there's a lot of behind the scenes work. And uh, Brian Hirahara brought this up as well. It's a lot of behind the scenes work when it comes to having a restaurant. Uh, I feel bad for the salons. I feel bad for the gyms. But if they were being able to open up on Monday, they could get twenty-four to forty-hour notice, get some staff in there and open up. And it is not that way with restaurants. They have to get their food orders in. They have to let people know that they're, of course, even going to be open. They have to staff up appropriately and sometimes it's too much staff and sometimes it's not enough. And a lot of these retail places, they can still do business. Uh, they may have reduced people going in person, but they can still do business. And the county has told these restaurants that you are not able to do business other than take our delivery. And as we know, there's those restaurants out there that are just not made for takeout or delivery. So we only have a finite amount of money that we can work with and we have to even determine what that will be. And if we open this up too wide, it's not going to really help anybody very much. So we have to really concentrate our efforts, as hard as that may be, as challenging as that decision may be in excluding some and including others. We have to give those businesses that are the driver of the economy in Walnut Creek, the best chances to get through. This next critical two months. And so I am for moving forward to see what we can potentially do on this. And uh, and, and we'll start with the restaurants and hopefully come, come March time, there is a bright new day ahead of us.
What was the next question?
What was the next question?
So the next question is, if the council is interested, which we've, I've heard a yes from, I think, all of you, what parameters or criteria would you like to provide staff as we develop the program? So this could be, is it citywide? This could be, you know, thoughts about how the program is administered. It could be the chain, not chain discussion. So throwing it back to the council, what parameters would you like us to consider?
I mean, I'll, I'll start off, I mean, we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Because you can design, you know, you can either design a grant program that runs fast or that runs really, really well, but the really, really well is gonna cost to get money out the door. So we have to be fairly streamlined in what we're doing. So I would suggest that we don't make it variable amounts, that we make it a flat rate or a one or two tier, no sliding scales. I would focus on independence, because I do presume that the, the chain restaurants, and we'll need to divide between chain and independent, because we have some small local ones that have a couple of different storefronts. I would remain flexible on what they use it for, but I would want them to articulate what it is they would want to use the money for. And then I would not, I mean, while downtown is important, I think I would want it to be open to restaurants throughout the city. They're throughout the city or participating in rebound and facing the same struggles. So I would be willing to do it throughout the city. So, and I think as far as how you make the decision, you know, we're gonna take political heat, no matter which way we go. So I would say it's best to have a process that's relatively insulated from any perception problem. So pick a good crew of independent raiders and have them go forward with the process.
Could I just ask a follow up, if I may, Mayor, Councilmember Darling? But I heard you say to an extent is, is possibly to make it as ministerial as possible.
To make it something so that it is perceived as a relatively fair, flat application of easily discernible criteria. So not quite ministerial, but take as much subjectivity as it has you can out of the process, will make it go faster.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful. I mean, I agree with that, that the simpler it is, if there's some type of a declaration that the applicants would make in terms of here's what it would go for. This is their rough size, that they're an independent operator that, that's reviewed and more or less signed off on. And, you know, it simplifies it, as opposed if we're balancing on merits and need. And then there might be some question beyond that, is it first come, first served? Or how is that processed, assuming there's more demand than there is money, which may or may not be the case, but assuming that that would be.
Yeah, and I think Colette pointed to, you know, there's certain basic financial information we'll want from them. You know, make sure they're in good standing, make sure they're, they haven't already declared bankruptcy, things like that.
Have a business license?
Yeah, have a business.
All right, Councilmember Silva?
I would agree with citywide. I would agree with the small independents, although I think there is a, there is a hybrid, which is what about the franchise owner of a national chain? So we might have to still look at that. I think what we're, I, I like the idea of one, one to two tiers. I think it, we should not restrict how they use it, but we should give broad category, you know, utilities, da, 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 da. They can't, you know. I think they do need to produce some form of financial, and I was thinking about this. I think they need to be in good standing in the city, and we might want to consider that we focus. One of the things Benicia had was you had to have been in business for a year. So that meant you were removing those businesses that are caught in startup problems at the same time as this. Not only, this may be a way for us to really address the challenges that we've been having with those businesses that have, are not necessarily in good standing with the rebound program. So we might be able to look at that. And you can always give it different points. You can say this is a, you know, you can get a zero through five, but whatever. And I think number of employees may be something we want to know, because that, that may, that may be something to consider as a criterion.
For maybe a criteria of how much they get? Two, yeah. Councilmember Haskew?
Um, I, I think the non-chains and, and I am, every time I say this, I think, yeah, but there's the franchise owner and, and that, that person has a little bit more from the franchise, but really they're an independent producer, they are, they own their own business. It sinks or swims on their, on their investment. But I, you know, mostly it's the ones that don't have a lot of other sources of money than the standard bank loans and family loans and that thing. I, I think it should be throughout the city. There, there should be some criteria, as we pointed out, some restaurants are doing just fine, i.e. the pizza carryout places. It should be the ones that need the money. So I, I think we need some kind of standard of revenues under COVID circumstances. You could had great revenues up until last December, and then since then you've made 10% of what you made the prior year. That's a significant drop in your stuff. So I think we need to, to have some financial understanding about how COVID has affected the restaurant.
Can I ask you a question? Because you're the financial whiz. How hard is it for a business? I mean, I know in the business that I had owned, how hard it would be to show year over year difference. Is that going to be terribly difficult for a local restaurant, do you think?
It's, it's, I, yes and no. I mean, last year's tax return. Last year's tax return is last year's numbers. And, and yeah, it's not gonna be an exact, this is nine months of, six months of COVID and three months of, of, of good times. It's not gonna be soup to nuts, but it's gonna, it's a trend. I don't think it has to be exact, you could do random numbers. And we're just, we're just trying to get a sense of how impacted you were. And it isn't just revenue, it's how much you've had to spend to get your business in shape. I.e., did you invest in a pop-up? Did you invest in some special consideration to survive it? So, you know, a little bit, you know, just a rough profit and loss statement would be fine. Rough, and I mean rough, six categories. Seven, if you want to make it complicated.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
So I am in agreement that it should absolutely be citywide. And I don't know about tiers, the, the program that to me seemed to be the most fleshed out and, and that might fit is the Benicia program. I don't want to overcomplicate it, I don't want a profit and loss statement, but I think it had general parameters of information that had to be submitted that were essentially based on sales tax revenue, retention of local jobs, tenure of the business, some of the things that Councilmember Silva had mentioned. So I think that that would be a good model. I think my.
I think, I think we just have to remember, and I think this is important for all of us to remember, the more parameters we put onto this, the more complicated it is, the longer it will take to do the payouts.
Yeah, no, I'm aware, I'm aware of that, but I think there needs to be some measurement for staff to evaluate the applications and to prioritize them. I mean, it's not going to be an unlimited amount of funds. And so I think they are, and I'm looking really at Colette and Terry as being the committee that decides this. I think that would be the, my preference would be they administer it. And I think they need some criteria to evaluate the applications.
Okay, which brings us to me, and I agree it should be citywide. And I'll leave it to Terry and Colette to determine about the independently owned and operated, which I tend to agree with, and, and not look at the, at least the national chains. I know there are some restaurants that just have a couple of locations, and these are all still independent owners. I do want to, I do wonder, is there some kind of parameter that we can have on it that these businesses that would get the grant, they have to stay in business? What if they take $10,000 and they go out of business in, on March 1st? I don't know if that is something that we can, that we can stipulate, but in any case, I.
You need the financial, that, that, that is the financial information. And, and, you know, Matt just swatted that down. So, you know, I mean, that's why I thought you really needed it, is, you know, you were making maybe $50,000 profit last year, and you've had to, you've, you've lost 10, 40% of your business on a good day, probably 50% of your business by the end of the year. And, and, you know, you've had to make all these adjustments. That's how, that's literally how rough I think the financial information has. But if the number is so completely negative, I, I hear you. It's, it's good money after bad.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're not gonna be able to avoid that. I mean, we could try to avoid that, that has, that's a real possibility. We have to be willing to take a little bit of a risk.
Yep. So I think there's, there's your direction. You know, work with the parameters as best you can on that and come back with a plan that we can take a look at and hopefully be able to move on without it being spring or summer.
Do we need the amount of money?
So let me, let me back up, there were some conflicting direction. So I think it would be very helpful to have a summarized direction and/or motion about what parameters are absolutely critical and which you would like to leave to staff. I think that's important at this point. I do want to clarify that, I mean, we just heard some think the financial review is more important than others. I would just add that if we do include a review of financial statements or even a financial statement light, we should have a finance person and/or an accountant on the review panel, which obviously adds to the complexity a bit. And I do want to add that, you know, we'll figure out how to get this done, but Terry and Colette are doing a lot more than this program. We have roughly 200 restaurants, so you can imagine the volume of applications we will likely receive. It's going to need considerably more than two people. So we're going to have to reassign some staff, which may mean that other projects get stalled. Just be aware of that, and we'll come back and report on that. Additionally, fully intend to reach out to Walnut Creek downtown to enlist their support. As your council is aware, they requested $50,000 of financial support. And part of the rationale is that they're helping with the rebound program and with other economic activities. So I feel fairly confident they'd be willing to help us out and support this program. So we may need to enlist their administrative expertise in helping to administer this. So a little more clarity in terms of exactly which parameters are critical that all of you absolutely want to see, and then if there are others you want to leave to the discretion of staff, but that you feel are important that we consider.
I mean, I think I heard citywide and independent from everybody.
Yeah, and those are definitely two of them.
Tenure of business, I think, is an important one as well.
I know you're a business, yeah.
In good standing with the city?
Right.
Well, not, not just a year of business, though. I think maybe ones that have been in business longer should get a priority over ones that have not been in business as long. The tenure of business.
That's tenure, but I, I added, I did another criterion, which is in good standing.
Yeah.
So you've got the yes or no ones. Yes, they're in the city. Yes, they're independent. Yes, they've been in business for a year. Yes, they have a city license. And then you have the ones that have a gradation in them, and that's degree of need. Do we want to, you know, just a, I don't know.
I don't know, we talked about making it simple, degree of need, I mean, if we, if we just have a number.
That becomes subjective.
Yeah.
Do we want to talk about a number?
Well, wait, did we finish the criteria?
Yeah, I think we still have to work on the criteria.
I mean, I personally think a rough P and L is important, because we'll be able to see the level of need, but also the risk of them being out of business before they cash the check.
Yeah, I certainly didn't mean to swat that down, Lawella, I'm sorry if I did.
So a rough P and L, and then two criteria. One is they have seen a reduction of at least X percent. And two, they have at least an X percent chance of remaining in business for another six months if they, if the pandemic gets better.
I also thought Lawella had a really interesting point, which is the amount that they've invested in, in their business that is COVID-related. So you may have some, one business that didn't have, hasn't invested much of anything. They have some PPE, but they didn't put up a pop-up because they were a takeout model to begin with, that kind of a stand up and eat model, they didn't really use it. Or let's just say a coffee shop, people walk away with their coffee more than they sit and drink it locally. And then you.
Right, and there were some that were already set up. They had outdoor seating, they had, so they didn't need to do a lot of investing. Almost everybody did some investing, but if they had, if they already had outdoor space, they didn't have to do as much. And, like, you know, I think of one coffee shop that had more outside dining than inside dining.
What about number of employees or square footage? Should this be tiered based on the size of the restaurant?
Good question, I don't have a good answer.
Might be important to ask about, but how it would be used may not be yet determined that, but it might be a way to differentiate between some. It's not just a number, it, it's a different kind of number. The risk of losing a 1,000 square foot space versus a 5,000 square foot space might be important to under, if you have to weigh the pros and cons.
So what we have so far then is citywide, independent, tenure of business, good standing with the city, and review of financials.
And, and I'm fair seeing rough financials, it doesn't have to be, it, it's, it's not, you're not filing a tax return. You're just establishing that you've got some issues.
That you're wounded, but you're not, you know.
Down for the count?
Yeah.
Count seven, not 10? Okay.
And, yeah, I don't mean to make it like.
To Cindy's point, I want to make sure that we're not excluding franchise owners. So I think it's important that, however we define independent, that those folks are included.
Does everybody agree with that? Okay.
Okay, do we want to move on to what that number should be?
Well, Lawella and I brought in the number 500,000, so.
Yeah, we, we already made our vote.
Okay, and.
Can I ask then, what, what do you think the grant would be? Is it a $10,000 grant per business, most likely? Is someone just gonna come in and ask for 5,000? What's the maximum grant amount going to be?
Well, right now in business license, we have 222 restaurants. We have to assume that at least some of those closed. So I would say using 200 business, restaurant businesses as a marker would be a good place to start, so.
But I don't think this is about getting some money to everybody. I think it's about a competitive grant program, which is like what the Benicia, you referred to the Benicia model. I think they told me that maybe there were something like 70 that applied in the first round and 25 received grants. And then you'll have some. And then you'll have some businesses that don't need money, and they're not going to, I mean, they can kind of see, why would they fill out an application for something if they weren't competitive for it?
So five, so.
Five to $10,000 is what I, was, what I thought after kind of like looking at the lay of the land.
And it doesn't have to all be the same. There could be some that would qualify for 5,000, some that would qualify for 10 based upon number of employees, square footage, variety of different factors.
Yeah, that seems about right.
Okay.
And I can, I mean, the total of 500,000 gives you a chance of being able to help a significant number of people. A significant number of businesses.
Do I see nods on 500,000? Okay. All right. Well, there's your number.
Wasn't it five to 10?
$500,000.
$500,000.
Oh, $500,000 is total. Okay.
When I think that, I mean, unless you want to leave this discretion to staff, it seems to me it would probably, it'd be more straightforward if it were five or 10,000 per grant, not five to 10,000.
I think that was what Kevin said.
Yeah, agreed.
All right.
The, the two, it's the two tiers, isn't it, Cindy?
Yeah.
So do you have the direction you need on that?
Anything you need, Terry or Colette?
You know, um, one of the questions that we didn't specifically call out, um, but I'd be curious to hear if council had any specific thoughts on is, we've talked about restaurants. Um, we have six bars in the city, who, some of which operate like a restaurant, but operate or classified under the bar category. Um, are we open to including them in this competitive process?
So are you talking about people that don't have a type 47 license that have the type 48?
Type 48s. Um, in this, uh, journey, many of them have started offering food either in partnership with their neighbor restaurant, um, or by bringing in taco trucks or whatever it is they needed to do to, to be able to serve food, to be able to stay open. So in these times, they're operating more like a restaurant than they are a traditional bar because bars are entirely closed. So.
Six of them?
Maximum 10. Let me give myself a little wiggle room there.
Citywide, Terry, or downtown?
Citywide. We do not have a lot of type 48s in the city.
I'm, I'm thinking that's small number, small enough number to just, just say include.
Yeah.
That general agreement, consensus agreement?
I don't have a constitutional issue about it, but I, it seemed like if we're focusing on restaurants, we should focus on restaurants.
I don't think they're quite as, um, I think they're in a different class of, of business. Okay. But, but they can always, you know, I'm not sure they are able to answer the same, the questions the same way. But they're definitely small and independent. I do know that. There won't be any debate about a chain bar, type 48.
So is that, uh, so include them into, in the discussion? All right. Any other questions you need answered or direction?
And I'm assuming that depending on how this goes and depending how life goes, we can come back and have the discussion about the personal care and fitness facilities, who are also really in a pinch.
Yeah. So what we plan to do at this point is obviously we'll start to frame this up, uh, work it through. We can provide an update at the January council meeting and obviously, um, you know, start to get the applications out as soon as we can, allow for a period for, um, the restaurants and bars to respond. And then obviously there'd have to be a timeframe for review and then selection. But, uh, we can come back with those timeframes better defined in, in January as well as having, you know, hopefully most of this lined out and ready to go. And then, uh, start working on the program, issuing it in January. And we talked about, you know, the goal would be if we can by the end of March. But, you know, even if you look at, uh, I think it was somebody said.
End of March.
I'm sorry, February. But even if you look at Benicia's timeframe, you know, two weeks for application, two weeks for review, two weeks for program design, best case you're at six weeks, which, you know, puts us to mid-February effectively when you factor in the holidays. So, um, doing this by mid-end of February is going to be a tall order, uh, to get this done. So we'll report back, um, in January with what we have at that point in time.
And does there need to be a report back? I'm just wondering, can we just delegate this to staff at this point? I, you know what our views are on this.
Or do you, there is the ad hoc committee that can represent council with.
Yeah.
If I can just chime in. I'm sorry, I was just going to provide a little context about what else is in motion when it comes to, um, the staff that would be involved in this. So right now we are mid-stream in, um, getting ready to issue the, the parameters and the new program around temporary structures in our pop-up dining areas. While that sounds super simple, um, it has been a massive amount of coordination with the fire department and the architect and the engineer and city engineer. And that is just about ready to get to roll out. And our focus had been on getting that program really ready before the holidays, so that hopefully the businesses could be working on this, um, while the city is closed for the holidays and they're ready to go come January 4th. Um, we also were working on a program, a full comprehensive report back to council on the rebound program, what's been done to date. Um, the money's expended, the staff hours expended, um, in advance of your council priority sessions coming up. So, um, we've got some, some big elements in play at the moment that I, I guess my question, um, to ponder, I, I, I don't know if, um, I'm looking for directions so much is, um, is that if this is jumping in front of those things, please know that we're trying to juggle as many of these as we can. Um, but we are hitting max capacity with staffing availability at this point. And it's not that we don't want to be flexible and we don't want to help, but I, I just, you know, December, Christmas is literally a little more than a week away. Um, and, you know, we, we have some real practical capacity issues here that we're hitting.
So I, I will say that it's not as important, this is more important to me than a comprehensive report on what we've done.
I'd agree with that.
And I know.
Is it more important than the pop-up program? I mean, the structural one is, is the bigger lift on that. I just give you the report as an example, but this is really right up against the temporary structures program.
It seems to have a priority over that, though, because I don't think January, any of us think January 4th is the end of this, unfortunately. I could be wrong about that, but I think it's going to be the end of January from what I hear now, and then probably going to be, you know, extended beyond that. So to me, this seems like a priority over the pop-ups.
Maybe we should take a poll of the restaurateurs that are in the audience. I would, I would agree with what Matt just said in that it does take time, but if, if, if we have, you know, if we can do something toward this program before the holidays start, then there's time for germination and thinking. And, um, I don't know, it's, it, they're competing priorities. I get it. So. What do, what do, what do the rest of the, the other three think?
No, I, I think that, I, I do think that, uh, this should be prioritized in whichever way we can do that effectively. Cindy, uh, Lawella?
Yeah, I think you have to, um,
worst case scenario, if we don't get them the money, they can't buy any of the designed pop-ups. And therefore, we would have designs that will have nothing to do with it. I think that moves it to, we need to figure out how to get them a little extra support, and then we figure out what we're, what they're, what's next. So, and, and I agree with you. Um, January 4th isn't going to be what we expected it to be anyhow.
But if there's some way to add some additional capacity by finding some nice retired and new tenant city manager to help you do this, I don't know where they keep those, if there's a closet somewhere with them in it.
Maybe there are some that live in Walnut Creek.
Okay. All right. Is that, uh, enough direction? Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you guys for being willing to do this. I think it's, it, it's, it's a heavy lift, I know, but I know that it's a dark, dark time for the restaurants, and it's dark, dark time for many of the businesses in Walnut Creek.
All right. Well, this brings us to, uh, our last agenda item, which is the adjournment. And it's going to be in memoriam of Kyle Strongman. Before I talk about Kyle, I do want to say that this has been a very tough time for our families, for everybody. It's been a difficult year, a challenging season, and it's not going to be any easier for the next couple of months, but, uh, no more so than, uh, those families that have lost a loved one. And we adjourn this meeting in memory of Kyle Strongman. Kyle is the son of Planning Commissioner Ken Strongman and Melissa Strongman, is an active member of the community. Kyle passed away on December 2nd at the age of 29 after an extended battle with lymphoma. We express our sincere condolences to Ken and Melissa and brothers Michael and Kevin. And with that, keep your loved ones near, uh, whether you celebrate Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa. Have a happy holiday and a happy new year, and may 2021 be a better year for all of us. And we'll adjourn this meeting until our next regularly scheduled city council meeting on January 19th, 2021. Happy holidays, everyone.